Good evening and welcome. Before the board recessed, before, sorry, I lost my place here. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. A few procedural items will take place and then the board will hear thirty minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for additional public comment. So if you do not get to speak during the first call, we encourage you to stay until the end of the meeting to do so. To request to participate in public comment, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raise your hand button. When called upon, you will be unmuted. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. To request to speak during public comment, when called upon, once again, you will be unmuted. The board president will call our students first, so if you are a student who wishes to speak tonight, please add student at the end of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at two or three minutes for speaker and on an individual basis also has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. When your time is up, has elapsed, you will hear your time is up or you will see Vice President Alper hold up a a sign indicating that you're, you have fifteen seconds left. And if you are still speaking, you're allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you. Voya proporcionarles un breve resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de unos procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de treinta minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las diez, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario público y no lo pudieron hacer durante el primer periodo. Para comentar por videoconferencia, haga clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y seleccione el botón levantar la mano. Al ser llamado o llamada, le van a permitir hablar por dos o tres minutos, dependiendo la dirección de la presidenta. Después del tiempo asignado, lo volverán a silenciar. Y para comentar por teléfono, se le pedirá que levante la mano presionando estrella nueve. Igualmente, se les permitirá hablar y después del tiempo asignado, lo volverán a silenciar. Usualmente, la presidenta llamará a los estudiantes primero. Y también tiene la discreción de otorgar tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adaptación especial. Cuando haya transcurrido su tiempo, escuchará su tiempo se ha acabado si todavía está hablando. Para terminar su oración, pero trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm gonna very quickly go over what we're gonna be covering tonight. My name's Judy Appel and I'm the president of the school board. And so first, we are going to get a little report on our closed session. And then we're gonna hear union comments, committee comments, and then public comment. And then we have some items on our consent calendar. And then I think what perhaps there's the approval of a student new, the new, there's a new student information system, which I don't think will impact most of you directly, but it might. And then we're gonna have an update on the school reopening. And then we're gonna discuss some policies and then an update on our Black Lives Matter resolution passed a couple few months ago. So with that being said, let's move on. And let's go ahead and report out on the closed session. I'm gonna call on Vice President Alper to do that.
Thank you. Do we, do we need to call, do we need to call Roll first or? Or is that, did we, did I miss?
We should call.
Sure, I was gonna do it afterwards, but we can, we should call the roll. Liz, can you do that?
Of course.
Please?
Of course. Director Leva Cutler, Director Vethris Leva Cutler.
Presente.
Director Miles Miller.
President.
Director Karija Brown.
Present.
Director Julie Sinai. Vice President Alper. President Appel, President Judy Appel.
I'm here. Thank you very much, Ms. Titus. Now, why don't you go ahead, Vice President Alper?
All right. Thank you, President Appel. This is the report from closed session. And item three point one point one, B S D case number two zero two zero two one dash sixteen. There was a motion by Director Leva Cutler, seconded by Director Sinai to approve the staff recommendation. President Appel voted in favor and the motion passed three to zero. Director Brown and myself were absent. Case number, I mean, item number three point one point two, case number two zero two zero two one dash seventeen. There was a motion by Director Sinai, seconded by Director Leva Cutler to approve the staff recommendation. President Appel voted in favor and the motion passed three to nothing. Myself and Director Brown were both absent. In item three point one point three, O A H, case number two zero two zero zero nine zero six three seven, the board heard an update and gave direction. In item three point two point one, district negotiation or conference real property negotiators, the board heard an update and gave direction. Collected bargaining, three point three point one, Berkeley Federation Teachers, the board heard an update and gave direction. Three point three point two, Berkeley Council of Classified Employees, the board heard an update and gave direction. Item three point three point three, Local twenty one, the board heard an update and gave direction. And item three point three point four, Union of Berkeley Administrators, the board heard an update and gave direction. And that concludes the report from closed session. Back to you, President Appel.
Thank you very much, Vice President Alper. Very soon, well, we'll see. But so now we're gonna go ahead and move to public testimony. I said that order wrong before and we have a lot of people who want to speak tonight, so I'm actually gonna suggest we give everybody a minute and a half. Will you time that, Vice President Alper? A minute and a half and at fifteen seconds, you will give everyone a notice. Okay, I have several students here. Why don't we start with Augustine Saliu?
President Appel.
Yes?
Did we do a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, I'm so sorry. You know, I'm messing up my last meeting so much. Okay, so let's approve the agenda and I think we need to pull item consent item eleven point one zero out and vote on it separately. Because I think we have Julie Sinai might have a conflict on that issue. So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the agenda with item eleven point one zero being voted on separately under consent. Second.
A second.
Seconded by Director Brown. Ms. Titus, do you want to take roll?
Vice Director Leva Cutler.
Yes.
Director Sinai. Director Miller.
Yes.
Director Brown.
Yes.
Vice President Alper.
Yes.
President Appel.
Yes. See, we all do this together. It's a beautiful togetherness opportunity. All right, so let's go ahead and do open session and I'm gonna give everybody a minute and a half to speak. And Ty is going, you should keep your eye on Vice President Alper's window because he will hold up a sign. Do you want to hold it up to show people? At fifteen seconds? And then he's gonna tell you, so I held up another one when your time's up. All right, so moving on, I'm gonna call on Augustine Saliu. And then after Augustine, Spencer Pike.
I really wanna go back to school because I miss my friends, my teachers and all the field trips. I don't like being in front of the computer almost all day. My little sister, who is in kindergarten, always asks us when the Zoom is finished and we and when we, we go to BAM. I think we should go back to school because I'm used to where, to wear a mask all day. And my little sister, who is five, can wear a mask all day too.
Thank you. That was excellent. Public comment. Our next student that's gonna speak is Spencer Pike and then I'm gonna go to Charlotte Thornton.
Hi, I'm Spencer. I'm a Berkeley High School student. My experience with distance learning has been, you know, not as good as I expected. It's been really difficult to keep up with the workload, especially since content is going twice as fast and, you know, half the time. And my teachers are struggling as well. It's definitely an adjustment for all of us. And I know a lot of my friends are struggling as well because of the stress, the social isolation. As the previous speaker just said, it is hard to not see your teachers. It is hard not to see your fellow students. And a return to school would definitely benefit all of us. Obviously, you know, we should be safe and all that, but I would appreciate it if the board would consider making a plan, if possible, to return to school. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you very, very much. Charlotte Thornton?
Hello. Hi, my name is Charlotte Thornton. Can you guys hear me? Okay, perfect. My name's Charlotte Thornton. I'm the senior class president at Berkeley High School. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about the concerns of the senior class. While we recognize these current conditions are extraordinary and uncertainty is something that we are trying to live with, we as a class are tired of information. I'm here tonight because I received some questions from the student body. Since COVID cases are at an all-time high for Alameda County, will that affect Berkeley High School reopening? Is there a possibility just upperclassmen could return to campus? And is there a plan for independent study students since they are a smaller group? If the school board doesn't intend for seniors to go back to in-person school, is there a plan to explore in-person social events like graduation? It's clear that the seniors are unhappy with our current situation, as we all are. And we'd like to see the school board support Berkeley High as much as they can. I look forward to learning your responses later. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I believe that's our last student. Oh, no, Adie Weber. Oh, no. Let's see, there's Adie Weber and then Ultraviolet Schneider.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I'm a sophomore at Berkeley High. And as much as I think we all can recognize that this is a very difficult time for everybody. If we can go back to school or have like a hybrid plan in some way, I think that would be really, really effective because a lot of people are tired of distance learning and we can't be as effective as we'd like to be. I know a lot of my students, my fellow peers aren't doing so well academically and they don't feel like they're learning too much and AP courses are going very, very fast. And it's very hard to learn and have connections with teachers. Communication is very difficult. Some teachers don't have the time to email back all their students and create bonds that are really necessary in order to have a productive class. So I think if we can push a little harder and try to have a hybrid plan, I think that would be really beneficial for all Berkeley High students. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll see. No other students. I am going to go to Linda Clark. You have a minute and a half.
Wait, President Appel, Ultraviolet Schneider is still the last student.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Ultraviolet Schneider, I'm sorry. Go ahead. That was my fault.
No worries. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ultraviolet. I'm the Associated Student Body Vice President of Berkeley High. And I'm also an independent studies student. And I really just wanted to make my message on here that I think that a hybrid plan would be the most suitable. I have witnessed firsthand and I'm also experiencing trouble with distance learning. And I do want to speak on behalf of the Independent Studies Program that I think it would be, you know, remotely safer for us as a group to go back as well, just because we have individualized schedules. We have less, we have less people in our classes and it overall could be safe and I see it happening. I also want to speak on behalf of the art students and performing arts students at Berkeley High. I am in Afro-Haitian dance this year and I would love to see if we could get music classes and dance classes back and mainly just arts classes as well on campus in some way. I think that that kind of contact, contact is really important, even though it doesn't require physical contact by any means, unlike sports, unlike physical contact sports. So if we could get the arts classes to somehow be on campus or even remotely, that would be great. So that's all I wanted to say, but thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I almost skipped over you. So now let's go to Linda Clark. Ms. Clark?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I would like to first acknowledge that this is not an easy time for anybody, obviously. It is causing multiple different difficulties for everybody. However, having said that, I really want to address something that was said at a previous board meeting where somebody said, it's always the same people speaking and they're always saying the same thing. And this person was exactly right. I am always saying the same thing because I truly believe it's too dangerous to go back to school. I read a lot of stuff from all around the country and different places in the world. And schools that open, close down again because the people in those schools get infected. And I also read studies about different illnesses that are happening through COVID. And even though children do not apparently get as sick as adults, but what they are getting, they found in a study in the UK, that most of the kids that were tested and found to have type one diabetes had also tested positive for COVID. The numbers of type one diabetes in children doubled this year. So there are multiple of these studies. I understand people want to go back to work, but it's, it's too much of a risk. Even if you don't get sick and die, you could have a lifelong disability. To me, that's just too serious to even risk going back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we're gonna have Jonas Lamateri Brownell and then Jose.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonas Lametri Brownell and I'm B S D's Herick Hospital teacher, teaching psychiatric hospitalized adolescents in grade six through twelve in multiple subjects. And I also now serve first to fourth grade students and their families in B S D's Assisted Homeschool Program. I'm so fortunate to have such meaningful, challenging and inspiring work. I humbly suggest that we, B S D as a whole, listen to public health science by making it clear to ourselves and the community that community spread of COVID nineteen must come down to a low level or an end before we engage or continue in-person contacts. And that in the meantime, we must focus on continuing to responsibly improve and enhance distance learning and B S D services to all students and families, particularly those hardest hit through this extraordinary pandemic. In less than a year, our nation has lost more than three times the American combat deaths in the entire nine-year U.S. War on Vietnam. Let us step off the roller coaster of rising, falling, and then again, rising community spread of this killer disease. Let us remind ourselves that until our authorities do enact the real solutions that other nations have achieved, we must support each other, be creative, and prioritize the most vulnerable and most needy.
Thank you, Jonas.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to go to Jose and then Emily Apt and then Melissa Corrigan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jose and I am a member of the Community Teachers and Students Caucus, EOM BAM, that has been protesting the reopening of schools. And I do want to echo what the last speakers have said. Today, America crossed the line of over a quarter million deaths in the country. New York City closed schools tomorrow effectively because the numbers of COVID cases around the country are spiking all over. California is not the exception. Berkeley is not the exception either. And children are not the exception. Two out of five people, according to the CDC, are asymptomatic. That number is higher on children. We don't know the long-term effects of COVID. To be placing children on classes, even if it's a small groups, it's irresponsible. It's dangerous. This bors should not be aiding. It is not your job to help businesses and corporations, you know, have free daycare in the schools so that parents can go back to work. It's your job to provide quality education for students and that means improving the quality of education. Black and Latino students are not as privileged to be calling for reopening of the schools. They need resources, online education, bilingual education, safe education. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jose. Now I'm gonna have Emily Apt and then Melissa Corrigan and then Jack Harris.
Hi, everybody. On behalf of all Berkeley's kids, I want to personally beg B F T to publish a list of objective, measurable conditions that would enable them to support the reopening of schools. They've been asked multiple times for this, but so far have not given any. If they genuinely, genuinely want to reopen as soon as possible, which is what they say, they should make it crystal clear what that would involve. What B F T has said so far is extremely vague and basically the, the goalposts could shift indefinitely. For example, B F T often mentions testing as a stumbling block. But what, what, how, how do they want testing done exactly? How often and for whom? Other times, they mention the vaccine. But when the vaccine is released, will they then say, we have to wait until X percent of the population take it? This is not good faith negotiating. This is just stalling. Also, lastly, in regards to middle school and high school kids, they've been shut out for eight months now and have gotten zero information about reopening plans. Why the silence? These students, already devastated by months of lack of social interaction, deserves to at least be given some hope in the form of a reopening target date. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna turn now to Melissa Corrigan.
Thank you. Berkeley parents, teachers and caregivers all care deeply about Berkeley students and we want what's best for the entire community. Looking at the superintendent's plan and the preparations for reopening, I can understand how a well-presented plan gives hope. But because we care so deeply about each student, we must acknowledge that plans on paper don't equate to safety in real life for real human interactions with children. Those who attended the district testing event recently may have seen that the district's plan for testing did not translate into the perfect reality that was hoped for. Now the learning will commence. Now we are told next time it will be better. This would be enough if we didn't care so fervently for every child. But the number of cases is rising. The virus has also mutated, is more contagious than it was when we first closed the schools. Schools set the tone for the community. By continuing to open prematurely, we are sending the wrong message. I am not willing to stand by while plans are tinkered with, mistakes are made at the risk of lives lost because people are tired of staying the course? Closing the schools only sheds light on the problems facing families. Unemployment, lack of affordable housing, insufficient childcare systematically, racism, providing food, counseling. We are not capable of addressing every social problem. Please, turn your attention instead to your state and federal regulators and legislators who have allowed these problems to continue instead of looking at getting back to normal. Let's focus on getting it right.
Thank you, Ms. Corrigan. I'm gonna go to Jack Harris and then Claudia Iris Aguirre and then Matt Weber.
Hi. Our daughter attends kindergarten at Sylvia Mendez and we love her teacher and support staff. But it's heartbreaking to see her miss this crucial year of in-person schooling, most importantly because her social development is stagnating. We had gone to great lengths to limit her screen time. And now she's experiencing her first year through a computer screen. I hope these youngest kids will get at least a small taste of the kindergarten that all of us experienced when we were kids. We understand the risk to family members and teachers, but the harm to students, particularly the, the youngest students, is real, cumulative and ongoing. The city of Berkeley Public Health Officer said it was safe to reopen on October thirteenth if ready. And my wife and I were extremely disappointed to hear that the B S D was not in fact ready. And we hope, you know, that the school district will stick to the targeted January thirteenth reopening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'm gonna call on Claudia Iris Aguirre. And then I noticed there's a student who just signed up and his name is Matthew Giaty. I'm gonna put him in after Claudia.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So my name is Claudia Esaguirre. I am a parent. I'm a Latina parent. Not that I like to self-identify, but we hear people mention that. So I have a sixth grader. He is considered a success. And he is online. He is checked in. He has his camera on, but he is looking at ten pranks that went too far on YouTube. And he is watching Minecraft. And that's because I'm working during the day because I'm a working mom. So he's one of your successful distance learning students. He's at, he's at Willard where the teachers are doing the very best they can. And I have a fourth grader, Sylvia Mendez. So she was assessed last month for reading at a second grade reading level, at the exact same level, L, that she was assessed at in March. Now, actually, I would be devastated by that as my fourth grader, yeah? But I know actually she reads better than that because she has an I E P and she doesn't read well on screens. So if she was read in person, she'd probably be end of third grade. But this is what's happening under distance learning. We all know it's not working and it's not the teacher's fault. It doesn't work. And what really I have to ask you here, everyone on the board, is for the public, for the opening, the schools should be a public health decision, public health officials. We need to listen to science. So we're not gonna let parents decide when to open the schools. We're not gonna let teachers who are professional educators decide when to open the schools. We're going to follow the science of, you know, of our county health officials and Dr. Lisa Hernandez that said the schools could open on October thirteenth. And had we been ready, our children would have gotten some schooling before we went back into purple. And it's highly likely we'll be back in yellow by January nineteenth, so let's please hold to the target date. I love the Berkeley Public Schools and to tell my children, my sixth grader, he's not going back is really heartbreaking.
Thank you very much. Now I'm gonna go to who did I just say the student? Oh, he's up there. That's, okay, so go ahead, Matthew.
Hi, my name is Matthew Galati and I'm a senior at Berkeley High. I would just really appreciate the exploration of an in-school option because like I would consider myself like successful in this learning environment. And I really feel that like I haven't learned much at all. Communications with teachers is pretty stunted. A lot of teachers of mine are overwhelmed and it's not really their fault, but it's just, it's a really big struggle trying to learn things with like without complete lack of communication between teachers. And I think a lot of us aren't really asking like to force going back to school, but just the exploration of an in-school option, especially for students.
I can't hear you anymore, Matthew. Can you maybe move to somewhere where you?
Sorry, can you, can you hear me now?
We can hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. And just like, yeah, as I was saying, like, a lot of students are doing a lot worse than me. A lot of my friends are struggling even more. And I think that, like, in terms of, like, since we're all seniors, like, in terms of preparing for college, it's, it's just really difficult doing that without any type of communication between teachers and students and any real learning going on. And a lot of like studying habits and just like basic schooling is kind of falling apart in my mind. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. And now I'm gonna go to Matt Weber and then to Nova Blazé and then to Tristan Palbert.
Thank you. My name's Matt Weber. Yep, thank you. My name's Matt Weber. I'm a parent of a BAM second grader. And I would echo a few points previously mentioned, but just really stress again, this is a decision that should be made by the public health official and has been very strongly stated, as has in many other counties throughout the Bay Area, that schools should reopen. There's been a lot of documented press and reports about, you know, damage to brain development as a result of extended screen time. And, you know, we're basically using our kids as test subjects to prove, you know, long-term impacts to their brain development because we can't follow the public health officials' direction that schools should reopen. And I'm concerned for students that are already part of the achievement gap. That achievement gap is growing ever so widely. You know, not to mention the social, emotional well-being of our kids. And I'll tell you, for myself and other parents I've spoken to, the amount of anxiety that there are around children because they're not having those social interactions and, you know, having time in the social, emotional toolbox, et cetera, is really heartbreaking. So I would encourage the board and teachers to really prepare for reopening, as been stated, and to not move any goalposts to be very firm in the decisions that have been made to reopen in January.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. So now we're gonna go with to Nova Blazé and I just want to say that we will hear from ten more people in this, sorry, in this public comment and then public testimony period and then everyone else. We hope you'll stick around till the end of the meeting. So go ahead, Nova.
Good evening. My name is Nova Blazé. I'm here with my husband, Ian Moore. We're parents of two Berkeley High daughters, a freshman and a sophomore. And I'd first like to start off by thanking everyone with the Berkeley Unified School District who's, who's working. I just tremendous gratitude for everything that everyone's doing right now. We're participating tonight because we are in favor of going back to school. We're participating tonight because we are in favor of going back to school. I want to echo Matt Weber's previous comments about really following the lead of our public health officials and their recommendations. And really want to encourage the school board to put out the clear plan, a clear plan that has been asked for in the past. I also want to acknowledge that right now in particular is a very scary time to talk about reopening, given the current increase in coronavirus cases. But nonetheless, I really want to encourage you in your leadership to be as courageous as possible to move forward, to tell our community that you're being courageous for students or for the entire community and that it can be done safely and that you will open. I share similar concerns about our daughters being in front of the screen for hours on end. And not to mention the increasing impact this has on inequity in our community. We received email from one of our teachers saying that they're concerned about kids not having their cameras on during Zoom classes. I asked my daughter about that and she said that she knows that some of those kids are having family problems and that's why their cameras are not on. So as a community, we need to pull together. Please listen to health officials and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next we'll have Trista Palburnsy and then Yvette Salarka and then Hannah Margulies Cassell.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Tristan. I'm a Berkeley High graduate and not talking about school reopening. I wanted to talk about the transgender and gender non-conforming policy. Just wanna put my word in, in support of that. I'm a gender queer student. I went through kindergarten through junior year. I tested, graduated early. But I think that it is really important in Berkeley, a community that has so many gender expansive students and I just see that increasing and, you know, as we continue to get to more progressive, for teachers to have training in language around gender non-conforming students. I had a lot of teachers that I felt supported me, but I also had a lot of teachers that I didn't feel understood. And in such a gender diverse community, I think that's really important. I also just do want to comment on what I have heard about schools reopening. I'm no longer in Berkeley. I'm in the UC system and I'm living in a county that has extremely high COVID cases. And it is like terrifying to go outside. You can't really go into grocery stores because the numbers are so high. You don't have the kind of trust in your neighbors that you have in Berkeley. And so I really think that we don't want Berkeley to be like that. We want to feel safe in our city. Berkeley's a great place. So more just to the students. I know it sucks, but it's worth it in the long run. So have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Tris. So now Yvette and then Hannah Margulies Cassell and then Dylan
Yvette Salarka, I teach at Martin Luther King Middle School. I teach ALD and Avid Excel and Humanities. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Equal Opportunity Now by Any Means Necessary Eon Bam Caucus. BAM has been organizing to stop the school reopenings and we've been picketing outside the three schools that have started the Phase One reopening. And in talking to parents and families that are going in, we found that the majority of the families that we do talk to actually completely agree. It's not safe. They wouldn't be sending their kids to the schools if the school district had provided more support for their children, including teachers and instructional assistants, technology and technological support, or even bilingual support. And that's something that this district can and needs to do and it's in your power to do it. And it has to happen because parents and families shouldn't be set up to feel like they have no choice but to send their children into a situation that's completely dangerous. We're being told now by public health officials not to gather in households beyond three in any situation. Each one of these cohorts in Phase One is eight to 14 or more children if the cohorts expand. It's completely insane. And so the past two weeks, everything, or month, everything has changed in California. And to put it as a parent said it two weeks ago, after someone said that a parent had died, another parent who worked in an ER said, "It's like watching a slow-moving train wreck."
That's your time, Ms. Salarka. Thank you very much. And now I'm gonna move on to Hannah Margulies Cassell. And I just wanna say that right now we're gonna end with Carolina Zamorano. But if anyone before her feels like conceding their time, we'll let somebody else talk that's further down the list. Okay, go ahead, Hannah.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Margulies Cassell and I've been a kindergarten teacher at Washington and a BFT member for over a decade. I'm deeply concerned that the district has opened Phase One and plans to continue to stay open despite the county and most of the state moving back to the purple tier. It is not safe for anyone to return to campus, but the specific groups targeted by Phase One are especially vulnerable. So firstly, BUSD's special ed and English learner populations are disproportionately Black and Latinx, which are the precise groups that have some of the highest COVID-19 infection and death rates. Additionally, many special ed students have health conditions that make them particularly vulnerable to the virus and make social distancing and mask-wearing impossible. And lastly, many of our ELL students live in multi-generational homes with older relatives who are yet another vulnerable group. We cannot ask our most vulnerable children and their families to risk their lives in order to receive an education. Instead, we need to find ways to make distance learning work. As a district that holds equity as a top priority, BUSD can find innovative ways to support these groups in distance learning by offering services like translators, joining ALD Zoom classes, online tutoring, home visits for students with special needs. I urge the board to shut down Phase One immediately and move forward in a way that reflects the commitment to the safety and academic achievement of all students by providing more resources for distance learning, rather than asking some of our most vulnerable to put their lives at risk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we're gonna move to David Schroeder and then Amanda Toporek and then Anastasia Sakeyuriadi. Well, I probably destroyed that last name. I'm sorry. David?
I think it's Dylan.
I'm sorry. It's Dylan?
Dylan is there.
Oh, well, I don't, I think he must have lowered his hand. So Amanda Toporek?
President, he's on the screen.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Dylan. Love to hear from you.
Hi, I'm Dylan Desgupta and I am in sixth grade at King Middle School. I just started my new school this fall. For me, middle school was a big deal, so I was really excited. Now I feel sad and depressed whenever I have to log onto my classes. When I do, I want to cry. I've never even met any of my teachers or classmates. Distance learning does not work for me and many other kids across Berkeley. I understand that in March, schools had to close, but when I heard it, I trusted you guys to get me and my friends back to school when it was safe. It's been eight months now and I've not heard a word about middle school's opening. So please open the schools as soon as possible.
Thank you, Dylan. Now I'm gonna go to Amanda Toporek. And I noticed somebody did lower his hand, so I'm gonna go through to Kathy Utterson.
Can you all hear me? Oh, I see my name. Okay. Good evening. My name's Amanda Toporek and I teach social studies to the 12th grade classes in both the Arts and Humanities Program and Multilingual Program at Berkeley High School. I'd like to speak to you about the logistical realities of the high school. The realities of what we are calling a hybrid model of learning would be impossible to implement at BHS with the necessary health and safety specs. On a given day, I teach about 60 students who also take two other classes a day with different groups of students and teachers, a substantial decrease from our six-period schedule, but still quite a lot of contacts. A hybrid model would create an extremely high level of bubble mixing and would render it impossible to contain any infections that arise. Our students at the high school are vulnerable to this disease. I've already had students get sick and have complications. Caution is not just for staff and parents. They are necessary for students as well. Furthermore, a hybrid model would mean an entirely new schedule for all of BHS, which typically takes our counselors months to make. It means students would be switching teachers mid-year and placed into classrooms with peers they've never met before. As many of our students struggle with mental health and social connection, pulling apart small schools and established classroom dynamics would be devastating. Right now, just over a third of our seniors in the multilingual program are not in the Bay Area and several not in the US. This board continually discusses making offerings to our most vulnerable students. Oh, sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, I have Anastasia Sakeyuriadi.
Thank you, President. Anastasia is fine. I would like to bring to the attention of everyone attending that there is an online petition for the intensification of efforts from the district to prepare our schools for safe reopening once it's again allowed by public health officials. It's available at busdparents.com. And I would like to bring up two points about that. First of all, if you wanna talk about huge districts like New York, we should see that after eight weeks of in-person instruction, there has been, it has been proven that virus transmission in schools was very low and there are no proven links so far to the current spikes, which are linked to restaurants and bars, which surprisingly are not closing down with these new restrictions. Regarding student COVID testing that was signaled by the teachers' union as a hurdle to come over in order to reopen, there are doctors at UCSF who have been setting up schools for staff and student testing all this time and confirming testimonials at the website that there is a workable system to follow. So the system is there and we can follow it. And lastly, I hear that the hybrid model is another hurdle. And I think as a parent speaking, I would like to see structure and social interaction as it will be a transitional period for anyone, the reopening. And it will be up to the specific groups to decide how much contact, content and what balance of content will be available at the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next I'm gonna go to Lisa Frydman and then Carolina Zamorano and end with Kathy Utterson.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say, for those who are talking about this being about going back to work, this is not about going back to work. This is about our kids. The concerns about being out of school are about the effects on our children. And those effects, as we all know, are educational, social, emotional, developmental. And honestly, we're not talking about the obesity issue. Kids sitting at home, sitting on screens, not getting exercise, all of these things are major, long-term, long-term health concerns. I work with kids and we're gonna see the impacts of this for a really long time. We should be looking at the science. We should be opening when the public health, you know, public health experts in general are saying it is safe to do so. Pediatricians from UCSF and in New York and around the country are saying it's safe to do so. There's districts who figured out how to do it even with higher numbers than Berkeley. So I know we can't do it right now because we're in the purple, but I would strongly urge the district to spend this time wisely, spend every minute right now to get every single piece in place so that we can open up as soon as we are back in red. And we're given the signal that it's safe to do so. I was extremely disappointed that we were unable to open in October and I see the effects on children around Berkeley. So my urging is just that. And two more quick points is one, at the middle school level, I'm super disappointed that math is twice a week. While we're in distance, why can't we at least have a meaningful math curriculum? I'm gonna add that. And last thing is, is there any way that fourth and fifth grade can have PE? Because it's not happening. And normally it happens at school, but from distance, there's no PE. So literally, our kids are getting no exercise. That's all I'd say. I know it's a super hard time. Thank you to the district for everything you're doing, but we need to do more.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Carolina Zamorano?
Yes, I'm Carolina Zamorano. I teach Spanish at King Middle School. So first thing, when I woke up this morning and I read the New York Times, it said they're closing the schools in these ghost and because of the numbers are going up. And here we are talking about opening, still talking about opening the schools. And first, I want to say to those children who talked at the beginning, I feel, I feel you. I, this is hard, guys. I totally understand. And I'm with you with that. It is hard. It is not the ideal way to learn. It's not the ideal word to teach for me either. I want to see my students. I want to be with them. But we need to wait because we're living in these extraordinary circumstances. And we need to be patient and we need to go back to school when it's safe for everyone. We don't want to open the schools and then close the schools because there are case of COVIDs. And then you're gonna be devastated because we had to open and then everyone is going to go back to your, to home. And so we need to be patient. We need to understand that we have to do this in a safe way. We don't want you to get sick. We don't want your family to get sick. And please, we need resources to, 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 okay, sorry, that's all.
That's okay. Thank you very much. Kathy Utterson, I'm gonna let you go. And then, I mean, I think with everybody else, I'm gonna let everyone speak, except if you can try to keep it down to a minute, that would be great. I mean, you'll have a minute and a half because everyone else has. But, you know, if you can try to be as to the point as possible, that would be great. And so I'm gonna actually make the last person, Mrs. Amanda Cardinal.
Go ahead. Are you ready? Yep. Okay. And I have an elementary school student, a second grader and two high school students. I understand the risks, the teachers, students, families, communities, they're real. Our whole family has already had COVID. But the harm to students and families greatly outweighs the risk as long as you open safely. Berkeley Unify is so disappointing to me that they had no plan on October 13th. Do not let it surprise you again. We will be in the, we will be out of the purple and I need you guys to have a plan. The Health Department states that schools have had, have, who have reopened for in-person instructions are not required to close if their county moves back to the widespread purple, which is where we are. And, but personally, I expect you to show your plan to expand your current opening. That being said, I heard the teacher, the female teacher who said that a parent agreed with her picketing. And I don't believe this represents parents who are there watching their kids go into school while teachers or whoever that is is picketing them. Come on. Now, for my high school student, the fact that there's no plan at all to reopen the high school or any aspects of the high school, including small cohorts or sports or other activities, is also disappointing. I'd like to see that on the docket. And now, I have moved my second grader to a private school. He hasn't been, he cannot Zoom, okay? He cannot do it. He hasn't been in school since March. He is not feeling academically. He does find that way. He's suffering from anxiety. He doesn't sleep anymore. You know, he's got all sorts of problems that are really challenging for us and for him. Oh, you're welcome.
Next, I'm gonna go to Antoine and then Kathy, oh, and then Catherine W.
Okay, hello, everybody. So Berkeley Unified School District, you have decided under the pressure of teachers' union to not reopen schools because it's not 100% safe. BUSD people, teachers, you have decided to sacrifice your kids' education for your own 100% safety, causing severe health and mental issues for some of our kids. Thus, BUSD people, teachers, as you think that personal safety relative to COVID is more important to all damages it's causing to our society, I'm inviting you not to go to the hospital anymore because it's not 100% safe for doctors or nurses on duty. I'm inviting you not to go to the grocery store anymore because it's not 100% safe for cashiers on duty. I'm inviting you not to order online anymore because it's not 100% safe for warehouse workers on duty. I'm inviting you not to call the police anymore because it's not 100% safe for policemen on duty. I'm inviting you not to call firefighters anymore because it's not 100% safe for firefighters on duty. I'm inviting you not to put your children in any private school, preschool or daycare anymore, like Mr. Meyer, president of Berkeley Federation of Teachers, did as it's not 100% safe for teachers on duty. I'm inviting you to stay home during holidays and avoid restaurant restaurants like the ones our governor seems to enjoy because it's not 100% safe for chefs on duty. Finally, I'm inviting you to spend Thanksgiving at home without any guests with fresh, fully homemade.
Thank you, Antoine. Thank you. Now I'm gonna call on Catherine W. and then Shamique Desgupta. And then Regina Group. Catherine?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Hi, my name's Catherine Arsky. I'm a parent of an Emerson student. I want to encourage BUSD to be ready to open for kids that want to go back at the very next opportunity we have. My first grader is suffering from a lack of in-person teaching and not seeing his friends. Every day is a new battle. We have successfully had our pre- We have successfully had our preschooler in person since September and while there has been ups and downs and closures and days we've had to take off because he's had a sniffle, overall it's been great. Those that can afford it are going to leave to go to other places, private schools and can spring disadvantage to other students. Now we've gone into the purple and we were not open already. We cannot open until numbers are done. I hope this will be in January, but there are no guarantees. It's very frustrating. There are ways to safely open such as holding outdoor classes. Other places have demonstrated this very successfully. I'm asking the district to be ready to open at the next opportunity we have and to actually open safely for those that want it for effective in-person education on the very first day that we can, please.
Thank you. Next I'm going to call on Shamika Desgouda.
Yeah, hi. This comment is about political polarization, actually. So I really want schools to reopen as soon as possible, so I joined this Facebook group with that mission. And it turns out that half the people there are these like COVID denying lunatics who think that Biden and the Clintons are coming for your children. It's kind of wild. They don't trust scientists who tell them that COVID is real and they refuse to wear masks and won't take vaccines. And honestly, I'm really grateful that our community has no time for that brand of nonsense. At the same time, half the people at these meetings also don't trust scientists. When local health officials said it was safe to open over five weeks ago, many people here refused to listen and they talked as if opening is the road to like Armageddon and they're hell-bent on keeping schools shut, even when they're directly contradicted expert advice. So what I want to say is that both these attitudes are completely beside the point. Public policy should not be guided by armchair epidemiologists, of which there are many these days, regardless of whether they come from the weird old right or whether they come from supposedly progressive circles. Public policy must be guided by scientific expertise and that alone, everything else is noise. So my question for the board and the superintendent is this. Are you willing to stand up for evidence-based policy? And if so, I invite you to commit this evening to reopen schools as soon as Lisa Hernandez deems it safe.
Thank you very much. And now I'm going to turn to Virginia Gubier and then Katie Love and then David Schroeder and then end with Mrs. Cardno.
Hamas. Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I just want to say that you had an opportunity to open and you missed it. And now we're going to have to wait months. And in the meantime, schools that already open can stay open. So I have personally lost all faith in the district. I have lost all faith in public schools here in Berkeley. And right now, I just wish I had the money to send my kids to private schools like you do, Mr. Stevens. Because I recently learned that your daughter, Mr. Stevens, has never set a foot in public school. And I understand now more the lack of urgency that you showed to reopen the public schools that you're in charge of. Thank you.
Right. Katie Love.
Hi, thank you for calling on me. I'm Katie. I'm a parent of children at Washington Elementary School and I was extremely disappointed that we did not reopen in October. We did not move with more urgency as a district when we were given permission from the public health officer. Our family had been patiently awaiting that moment for months, for seven months at that point. I want to underscore what others have emphasized already with the real continuous negative impact that closed schools have on our children. And I'm worried that BUSD may not reopen at all this year. Distance learning is not working for our family. No innovation or experimentation will make a material difference in that. A vaccine for children is years away. We cannot wait. We cannot wait for these children. I urge the school board to intensify reopening efforts. Thank you all so much for your support to our children.
Thank you very much. Now I'm going to go to David Schroeder.
Good evening, wonderful school board and staff. I appreciate your ongoing work in these very hard times. We know COVID-19 determines our realities. We only control how we respond. And I miss and I care about my independent study students and we're all experiencing trauma and grief and everyone deserves mental health and social time, but not by endangering our physical health. Being in denial or bargaining despite our grief won't change the facts. And the fact is that grouping people together continues to endanger public health. I know how the conditions at my school would be. They're just not safe. We don't have the space. We can't act on wishes. We must not commit to arbitrary reopening deadlines. That's been the path to overflowing mortuaries. As the school board continues meeting only via Zoom, the rest of us can follow suit. Until we suppress transmission, please keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Now I'm going to end with Mrs. Cardno. You were next. And you will be our last speaker before we carry on with the rest of our meeting.
Thank you to the board. Good evening, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I didn't have too much prepared, but I am a teacher, a BFT union member, and I'm also a parent of two kids in BUSD, both an incoming kindergartner who spent her first year on Zoom and an eighth grader who is transitioning to the high school. And I just want to be very brief and just say that I want to urge us to reconsider the reopening plans that we have for phase one. It's not safe. I see when my eighth grader simply has a cold, as she has an immunocompromised system, she is in the hospital in the emergency room for one to three days. And I couldn't imagine sending her or getting anyone in my family six as I am in a multi-generational household. I recommend that we reconsider putting our kids in our community in an unsafe position to continually, continually spread this virus that we do not have a handle on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I see that I did two other people open, raise their hand after I said I was going to take the remaining people. And so if you can wait until the end of the meeting, we'll have another opportunity for public comment at that point. So now I'm going to move on to the union comments. I know we have a BFT, we have BFT comments. Who has those on?
I will be sharing my screen momentarily.
Is that you, Liz?
Yes.
Evening, board members and Dr. Stevens.
Oops.
I'm Janine Laddell, Vice President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I'm also a first grade science teacher at Washington Elementary, where I've worked for almost 10 years. BFT continues to work with BUSD to find models for hybrid learning that meet the requirements of state law and preserve the structures of our distance learning program for students who will choose that option, while also meeting the needs of those who hope to come to school in person. However, sadly, and despite the best efforts of so many people, COVID infection rates have taken a turn for the worst in our city, county, state and nation. With Alameda County falling back into the purple tier that represents widespread COVID infections, we need to face some hard facts about the BUSD timeline for elementary reopenings. There is nothing in our current situation to indicate that rates will fall by January 13th. People are traveling and gathering. Teachers are hearing their students talk about plans to go on an airplane, drive for a long time or host visitors from all over the country. These cherished traditions will inevitably result in more infections, many of which will become apparent in early January. Whether or not the January date is possible, there is much to be done before we are ready to offer in-person learning. We encourage the entire school community to participate in the town halls and educator advisory groups that BUSD will hold over the next few weeks. We know that more focused outreach will be needed to learn about what our least connected students and families need. And we encourage the district to make every effort to get that input as well. We think it is incredibly important to be honest with the community about the trade-offs that will be necessary and the challenges that remain. One of the challenges that remain is COVID testing for staff and students. Epidemiologists recommend a very high rate of testing of all staff and students. Yet it remains a major hurdle for many districts, including BUSD. As we watch in dismay while the infection rates rise in our area and we learn of a case in one of our schools, the need for a robust testing program becomes even more obvious. We appreciate the superintendent's agreement to change this item on the reopening dashboard to reflect the current realities of our testing program. Testing must be easy for people to do. It must honor their time so that they can keep their focus on the important work that they are doing for students. We need testing to be available at school sites. We need employees to be able to make appointments rather than standing in hours-long lines. We need clear and accurate communication about the procedures that must be followed. And when problems arise, we need prompt responses and assistance from district leaders. Our entire community is preparing to put the safety of their children and families in our hands. They need to know that we are actually ready to open safely. The ability to frequently and reliably test students and staff is an essential component of our readiness. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Janine. Well, she's, I don't know if she's on, but um, I will. I do know that we have one committee. I don't see any other union member reps, but I will go ahead and call on Robert Collier, who wants to speak on behalf of the PTA. PTA Council.
Robert? Yeah, great. Good evening, everybody. I am, first I'd like to just say what I'm not here to talk about. I'm not here to advocate about reopening because there's no consensus in the PTA Council, as there has not been for many months. This is a time of pain on all sides. Those who had COVID, those who can't return to school because of personal health risks and vulnerability to COVID and those who are desperate to return because they have suffered deprivation, trauma and educational vaccinating in distance warning. The parent community is unfortunately very humanly deeply divided by this. We deeply respect people on all sides of this issue and also our teachers who are truly on the front line of any and all scenarios. And, and of course, last but not least, the BUSD administration, who are damned if you do and damned if you don't. And I personally think you've been making the best of a brutally thankless and impossible job. We very much appreciate the series of town halls that you're going to be holding starting tomorrow. However, formally on behalf of the PTA Council, I do want to advocate on two related issues in which we do have consensus. First of all, flu shots. The flu, of course, can be severe, especially for children. And of course, COVID can be severe or fatal, but a potential combination of the two is even more dangerous. The flu symptoms are very similar to those of COVID, as we know, so the appearance of these symptoms in schools, once they reopen, could cause havoc and great problems. So we need to prevent the spread of the flu. We want to encourage flu vaccinations. The flu vaccine exists now. It is safe and it works. Absolutely. Everyone should get vaccinated, children, parents, grandparents, everyone. Now, we understand it can't be made mandatory. I've inquired and I'm told that the city views it as not politically viable because there are too many anti-vaxxers in town. But in any case, the PTAs do want to offer our support to encourage and help families get their kids vaccinated, especially high-needs families without health coverage. So I'm here to suggest that BUSD partner with the city of Berkeley for free flu shots for high-needs families in some way that makes it easy for parents to do it. Now I'm told it can't be at the Ed Hub for various, various perfectly reasonable reasons, logistical and otherwise. But find an easy location that makes it easy for families to do this, to get their kids and themselves vaccinated. The PTAs will help spread the word, will volunteer to help with the flu shots at the, at the flu stations. So if you can work it out with the city on this, we'll be more than glad to help. The second issue is hotspots for families without internet. There's been discussed for quite a while to deal with, you know, all the various families who you know, don't have good internet access. We need to have high-speed internet to houses. We strongly suggest that BUSD partner with an internet company, for example, Sonic Fiber to houses. If there happens to be an initiative already underway to do this, we encourage you to move forward as quickly as possible to get internet to all the families who need it. Those are my comments. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Robert. I appreciate your speaking on behalf of the PTA Council. I don't think there are any other committee member reps or union reps who want to speak. So I'm just going to move on to the board member, board member comments and superintendent comments. Why don't I start with you, Julie?
Director Sienna, I mean. Thank you. I want to start off by thanking everybody who participated in public comment this evening. I know it's no small feat to take your Wednesday evening to be on another Zoom meeting and to share your perspectives. And I think as numerous people have already said, there is no consensus on this issue. And things are often polarized to where there's the perception that we cannot open until a vaccine is available for everybody. To, a public health officer said we can open, so we should be opening our doors and we should have done it, you know, yesterday. And the reality is we're somewhere in the middle and we need to do intelligent and intentional work in order to make our reopening safe. I want to just say that, you know, we are in the purple mostly across the state, but particularly in Alameda County, because we're seeing an increase. We are not surging in Alameda County. We are not spiking in Alameda County. But the state is being extremely cautious in order to keep the curve low and to flatten it. So while we talk about abiding by public health orders, I really hope that all of my colleagues, all of our families, all of our teachers and our staff are abiding by the public health orders of this holiday season. Because it's really our collective effort that is going to keep us with the ability of moving back into red, orange and eventually yellow, hopefully in January and February. Because we are collectively abiding by public health orders. Anyway, so I am passionate about following the public health guidelines. And I really feel that our school district has worked hard to abide by the public health guidelines because Dr. Hernandez said that schools could open October 13th. It meant schools could open if things were safe. If we had testing, if we had the right protocols in place, if we had social distancing abilities. And I think a lot of our facility work was actually done. But I really want to honor our teachers and our staff who worked diligently over the summer to create a distance learning program that was not an emergency education program that we put together in the spring. But that was a distance learning program that was implemented in August and September that actually had fidelity and integrity. And we all said in all of the school board meetings that followed in the fall that people have noticed a vast difference in our distance learning program and that is much better. The challenge for our students is the socially emotional and the social contact. So the reason our teachers could not turn on a dime when Dr. Hernandez said we could open on October 13th is because they had been implementing a full-time distance learning program that we all appreciated was actually working for many, but not all of the students. So now the challenge is to take that distance learning program, take the commitment to the hybrid and see what we can do on our school campuses that's safe. So I really, I want to stay on track and move to the January 13th timeframe. And I appreciate the time that our staff and our teachers and our staff, all of our staff members are making to come up with what are the solutions to provide simultaneous distance learning with simultaneous in-person without any significant dollars from the federal government to hire additional staff. So, you know, I'm kind of sounding emotional because it's, it's such a difficult situation. And all of our students are suffering, our teachers and our staff are suffering, our families are suffering. And we're trying to make the best of a pandemic. So I want to express my, really my support for everybody who's trying to come up with constructive solutions. And I do urge our labor partners and our administration to stay on track. And I do urge our small group cohorts to continue. And my understanding is that they're primarily outdoors, except for when they're doing their online, their online classes. So we are trying to adopt some of the measures that make it more safe for all of our communities. So, you know, I just want to express the appreciation of the frustration, the patience, but really for the students who came out and spoke and let them know that we really are working to try to open as safely and as quickly as we can so that our students can get the kind of engagement and learning that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. I'm going to go to Director Brown.
Thank you, President Appel. I think Director Sinai said it best. So I'm going to ask actually just a second what Director Sinai said and pass to another board member so that we can allow time for other public comments during the second testimony opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Brown. I'm going to go to student director, Miles.
Thank you. I apologize. Yes, Miller. I will not like Director Brown and I do have a little bit of lengthy comments hopefully for tonight, starting with concerns I got from students. Well, first of all, thank you to all the students who came out to the meeting tonight. You are working extremely hard through all these times as reflected in some of the comments. And if even if you aren't speaking, even if you're just here watching while you're doing like your math homework, something like that, thank you so much. We're here to serve you and your participation is everything to us. From students who weren't able to comment tonight, I've heard some things about the concern about the COVID rate jump, especially going into purple tier. That's definitely concerning considering how big Berkeley High is. However, there are also some other activities that we believe could happen, including other after-school activities. As we all know, sports conditioning has started, so we just want to push as hard as possible options for clubs, student clubs to meet after school, options for art classes to happen. And just any activity really that doesn't require, since most activities don't even require physical touching or being near each other, we want to emphasize as much as possible, especially this is another thing, distribution of other school materials, including yearbooks from last year. All of these things can possibly, could possibly be unsafe if we're, if we're, if we were planning, if we were making a plan to open, there's no reason that these activities should be deemed unsafe. And so I would push on that. I want to speak to the families for a second as well and just say this is a group effort from all of our parts. It's our job to get things moving with our plan and it's your job to this holiday season. Please limit the amount you're seeing family members and doing other things. If it's any help, Zoom is breaking its 40-minute time limit for the holiday, for some of the holiday seasons. No matter how you're seeing people virtually, just please keep that in mind. The more we spread out, the more unlikely it will be safe enough for us to return to school. And I want to emphasize that the cases may, even if the cases arise and the planning shouldn't stop and we should continue just moving full steam ahead. My last thing is as a student who's had many events canceled from our public health department, I fully trust our public health department and I stand by with their discretion and what they say to when we are allowed to open.
Thank you. Student Director Miller, I'm going to go next to Director Liva Cutler.
Thank you. Director Sinai, you said it all for us. And it was, but is very honest and authentic and it also recognizes our children, our students and their experience. And I'm glad to hear from a range of students from both the elementary, middle, and the high school. It's very important. I too have a granddaughter in middle school and one in the high school senior. So I heard directly from their experience too, and it reflects exactly what our students are saying. And so I deeply appreciate their voice coming to the board. It's not easy after being on Zoom in the day and then coming at night, we know. And we share that experiences being, especially for children and the younger children. So I just wanted to say that today, tonight is my last long meeting. Next, we only have one short meeting. I will share my appreciation at the next board meeting to everybody in the district, the parents, the community and on our staff. I'm really going to miss coming to these boards meetings and really hearing the concerns, the issues, even the anger from and frustrations that parents and students feel in our school district and how a board really, really does listen and really tries to best to garner the best ideas in terms of making it work for our students. There really is a commitment of the board to make that work for everyone. So, but thank you, everybody, and thank you for coming. Thank you, Julie, also for saying that for us.
President Appel, you were muted.
I said, thank you, Director Liva Cutler. And now I'm going to go to you, Vice President Alper.
Well, thanks, President Appel. Yeah, I appreciate Director Sinai's remarks and Student Director Miller's and Director Liva Cutler's as well. And I'll be brief, but I wanted to you know, appreciate all the families and teachers who came out tonight. And one of the parents said that the harm to some of the students in distance learning is real cumulative and ongoing. And I think that's true for a lot of kids and it's something that we feel really acutely. And it's the reason why I think we do want to keep our foot on the gas pedal and as Director Sinai said, continue to work with our union partners so that we're in a position to open if we can on January 13th right now. Dr. Stevens will tell us more about this. Right now, my understanding is that if conditions don't change, we won't be allowed to open on January 13th, but we want to be as ready as we can be when public health allows us to and the conditions allow us to do so safely. And one thing we haven't talked a lot about, but I think Director Sinai mentioned it, is the facilities work that's been going on the last few months. A lot of money and a lot of time has been spent getting our physical facilities ready for school reopening. That can't happen overnight. It didn't happen overnight. And it's something that I really appreciate our facilities department for prioritizing. And I guess I'm what, I hope people stick around, I assume they will, for the presentation about the hybrid elementary school plan and/or proposals that are being worked on right now. And feel an appreciation for the complexity of it that Director Sinai mentioned. And I just want to say, give one example that sort of highlights how sometimes the desires of some of the parents and families, reasonable desires that we hear from at our board meetings sometimes conflict with some of the desires we hear from other family members in other contexts, particularly through email. And also reasonable. So for example, to families that say the families that feel comfortable sending their kids to school should be able to do so with the teachers that are able to be in school teaching. What, and then the families that don't feel comfortable sending their kids to school can keep their kids home. I think it can have surface appeal, but what that would mean, and I think people need to understand, is that that would mean a complete reshuffling of elementary school classrooms. So that the families that say to us, my, my child is actually doing okay in distance learning and the only thing that's keeping him or her engaged is a connection with their teacher. And I don't feel comfortable sending them to school or they're immune compromised. What it would mean to switch to a model where just families that wanted to go to school could go to school would mean that that other family would lose their teacher. And would cut, and those are the sort of competing harms that we have to weigh when we're in a pandemic, as Director Sinai said, that have, that has no good answers. And it also may be true that the families who send their kids to school have substitute teachers because of, because we're not able to have enough teachers on campus. So it's just one example, but I hope as we listen to Dr. Stevens' presentation, there is an appreciation for how complicated this is and that folks know that it's not just being defensive, although I am defensive of the work that's been put into these plans. It's also a reason why there's a lot of work to do to meet our target dates and why it's going to take a lot of effort on the part of our staff and our union partners to get there so that we're able to open safely when we're allowed to.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you, Vice President Alper. So now I'm going to say a couple of words. I will join my colleagues in echoing, including Director Brown, and echoing Director Sinai's sentiments. I want to restate some key points that I have felt were particularly important to me. Mostly, and I think this was underlying Julie's comments, is that public health guidelines are key. Following public health directives is key. And the numbers in Berkeley have stayed low because so many people are being very careful. And I hear that from others and friends and including Trish who spoke tonight, who lives, doesn't live in the Bay Area anymore. And it just makes me really appreciate how careful we're being. So we couldn't open in October because that wouldn't have been safe. It wouldn't have been that careful. I want parents and students and everyone to know that we all want to get our kids, we all want to get our students back in school as soon as it's safe for our students and our staff to be there. I'm really sorry that folks feel that we've not been, we haven't paid attention to their requests for reopening because we have. And we have been, we've been moving with a lot of urgency. But we have to think of what's going to be safe for the community. That's our job. And you know, people have talked a little bit about how the schools in New York have been opened. And I just want to say, I talked to two of my nephews today who, who are, who live in Brooklyn and they've been in school and their schools are now closed as of tomorrow. And they're really, I mean, you know, their families are happy that they've been out of the house and they've been able to be with their other students and they've been learning in school. But they're, you know, they're all worried about the access and the exposure that they've had to other people during this time. So I'm really actually very grateful that the people in the, in the central office and the people in this district have taken so much care to make sure that when we do open, we really are going to be safe for our students and our staff. There are clearly really deep feelings, both about those who want to come back and those who think that we should remain closed. And I want to thank all the people who came out today to talk, to speak, and mostly the students because I think that your experience is the one that we are, your experiences are the ones that we are most, we, or I, I should say, are most conscious of. And one, I like, I really want to hear how it's going for you. At the same time, I really, really have to take the responsibility of making sure that if we open, we are safe. So I really do want to thank the District Central Office for working so hard and doing this, as well as to our teachers and our students. I'm grateful for all of your commitments to doing this right, doing it safely. And you know, just know that we are getting things back in order. And as soon as it's safe to open, we are truly getting ready to be able to do so with safety being key. So as Director Liva Cutler mentioned, this is also my last full meeting. So I'm going to leave my departing comments till next week, when I will have a chance to share a little bit what I've learned, as well as my gratitude for so many people. So with that being said, I am now going to actually, I'm going to give, there's a bunch of people who are on the dais, so-called, who some of you, some of you may know, but some of you may not know. So I'm just going to ask the people who are here to introduce yourselves and where you work. So why don't we start with you, Jay? You're on mute.
Hi, Jay. I'm the Director of Technology and should know better to talk while I'm on mute.
Thank you. Associate Superintendent Tiara?
Hey, good evening. Bajie Tiara, Associate Superintendent Educational Services.
Thank you. Sam?
Samantha Tobias Espinoza, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
Associate Superintendent Faalensby?
Hello, I'm Pauline Faalensby, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Thank you. Natasha?
Hello. Good evening. Natasha Beery, Director of BSEP and Community Relations.
Thank you. Liz?
Good evening. Liz Chytus, Executive Assistant to the School Board.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. You're on mute.
Good evening. Adrika Martinez, Coordinator of Professional Development.
Glad you could make it. Ms. Dean?
Good evening. Debbie Dean, Director of TKH Schools. Welcome.
Is that you, Sean? Who is, there's somebody here who doesn't have a name. Oh, Tom, I'm sorry, Tom.
I'm Tom Reinhardt, Coordinator of Research Evaluation and Assessment.
Welcome. And then Anne?
Hi, Anne Caligari, Supervisor of the Office of Family Engagement and Equity.
Awesome. So now I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Stevens for you to say your words, your comments.
Thank you very much, President Appel. Like everybody on the board, I want to offer a few words of thanks before we jump into the presentation where we'll talk about a lot of the details. Please do know if you're attending tonight's board meeting, that everybody here is listening very closely. We recognize that there's a real divide in the perspective among both our educators and our families and that folks are approaching this issue with passion, with emotion, with a sense of wanting to protect loved ones, whether that's children, whether that's parents, folks that we're all taking care of. So please don't know that we recognize the emotions that everybody's feeling and we are all, as individuals, also coping with those emotions. To the members of the Board of Education, I also want to express my thanks to every one of you for the ongoing wisdom, for your sense of community, for your sense of sort of shared responsibility. I really do appreciate all of your perspectives and that you've been hanging in there with, for so long, with district staff. To my district staff colleagues, I want to thank all of you for, you know, working past the point of exhaustion. I watched you all forego your spring break, forego your summer breaks, forego vacation plans this fall just to stay engaged in this sort of ongoing and slow-rolling crisis. And so I really do appreciate every one of you for the work you're doing. And then to our teachers, who are really the ones holding, for so many, holding our school community together right now. This experience, looking at screens day in and day out, is one that can be so often demoralizing. And yet it's our teachers' creativity, their energy, their passion, that I think is really sort of offering for so many young people, their thread to a connected school experience. As weak as that can be sometimes, as challenging as that is sometimes, if it weren't for teachers, then our students truly would have nothing. I want to offer just a sort of quick personal perspective on all this before we jump into details just a little bit later. You know, I am myself both a father and a son. You know, one of the speakers earlier mentioned my own daughter and I have been an aggrieved and grieving parent for the last nine months. My daughter has also not set foot on her school campus since the pandemic started back in March. And I've watched her suffer really greatly, oftentimes with a sense of helplessness that I think all of us parents are feeling as we know that our children are suffering. As a son, I feel deeply protective of my, my parents' health. My mom is watching tonight. And I also care for her safety and her concern. And it's these sort of two perspectives, the parent's perspective and the child's perspective that I carry forward as a sort of personal motivation into the work that I'm doing along with all of my colleagues. And as an individual, I feel this great dilemma. I want for my daughter what I don't want for my parents. And that is one, to move forward and the other to retreat. And this, I think, is really the dilemma that all of us are feeling. It's this great ethical compromise that we've been forced to confront as a community, oftentimes feeling abandoned as a community to make a set of very difficult decisions without the support I think we all need and deserve. So I mentioned all of these things sort of as the human in all of this, as the parent and the son of all of this, to say only that I connect to the pain that I hear represented by our families, by our educators, and by our community. So we'll talk details in just a moment, but all of this, or the heart behind the head, I think is really important to express because here we are together and we have to stay together through all of this.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Stevens. And I'm sorry that there was a personal comment about you during the comments. I probably shouldn't have let that go forward and really appreciate the hard work that you're putting into our district right now. All right. So we are now going to move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar less 11.10, which is being pulled out and we'll vote on separately? accept the consent calendar less 11.10, which is being pulled out and we'll vote on separately?
Let me make a motion.
All right, Director Lava Cutler's made the motion, and I think Ty Alper has seconded it, Vice President Alper. Ms. Chytis, do you want to take the role?
Yes. Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Lava Cutler?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now we have item 11.10, which is a ratification of memorandum of understanding with lifelong medical, Rosa Parks Kids Village. And I believe Julie Sine has to recuse herself?
Yeah, I will recuse due to a conflict of interest.
All right, do I have a motion to pass this?
I'll move.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Did you say, Director Miller, did you say you'll second it?
Yeah.
All right, let's take that. And Liz, why don't you go ahead and call the roll?
Hi, Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Lava Cutler?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so now we're moving on to our action item, which is 12.1, Approval of New Student Information System for 2021 School Year. Who will be presenting this?
I'd like to ask our Director of Technology, Jay Nitschke, to, I think, queue up the slides and he'll walk us through a presentation and ask for action by the board.
Don't forget to unmute yourself.
So do you have the slide deck or would you like me to do it, Superintendent?
Jay, are you able to do that? I do have it here.
Okay, so there's a brief presentation on the process we went through to pick a new student information system. So our agenda for my slide deck is why are we changing student information system? What was the process? What products were considered? And what's the recommendation? So Illuminate Ed, End of Life, its ISI product, which is its student information product. And they are choosing to focus on their core data and assessment product, otherwise known as DNA, which the district and many other school districts in California and elsewhere use. So we're continuing to use DNA. But the ISI product, we need to find a replacement for. So, you know, our requirements included many things, but a grade book interface, it's easy to use for all students, all teachers, and can handle our middle school grading scheme. California requirements, including CalPads, CICE integration, and a long time of success in adoption in California. We want to move to an online enrollment system. I think the need for that was really emphasized this year. And we were looking at vendors that had success with previous ISI districts. We've been watching the SIS selection processes over the last two years, including those run by Santa Cruz County of Education, County Office of Education, Fremont Unified, Monterey Peninsula, and others. And almost every one of these processes identified the same top three contenders, Aries, Infinite Campus, and Synergy, which is made by Edgepoint. We brought in each of those three vendors for seven-hour-long Zoom presentations. The topics were scheduling, behavior counseling, special ed, online enrollment, school office tasks, CalPads reporting and optional systems, teacher grade book, turn portal, and the conversion process from ISI, the training plan, some database details. Infinite Campus emerged as a selection. It was overwhelmingly favored among teachers. The two-grade how NSBP system that we use for grading in the middle schools worked without any modification for them. It includes an RTIMTSS component, some COVID features, also online payments, free and reduced lunch applications that will create some efficiencies. It's built on a modern database structure and the implementation cycle is a lot made a lot easier because Infinite Campus has an agreement to take the data rate out from Illuminate Ed. So if you look in your board packets, you'll see it's somewhat worse. All the products were more expensive than the current product we're using, Illuminate ISI. But Infinite Campus provided a better value than Synergy. Infinite Campus districts in the Bay Area include San Jose, Palo Alto, Eastside, Oak Grove, South City, Franklin McKinley, San Ramon, Fremont, Dublin, Hayward. These are all the districts that are as large or larger than us. You know, 10,000 or more students. There's a number of other districts, Piedmont and some other smaller districts. And that's what I have for you today.
Great. Are there any questions? So why don't you raise your hand on the panelist list? Okay, I see no questions. Do I have a motion to adopt this? This SIS?
I'll move. I'll move it.
Oh, so I heard first Director Brown, I think Director Sinai, will you second it?
Sure.
Can you unshare the screen, please?
Ms. Chytis, will you take the vote?
Yes. Director Lava Cutler?
She had to step out.
Oh, she had to step out.
Sorry, just had to go quickly. There was sorry, there's, I wasn't part of the presentation. I had a rundown because there's a fire right across the street from my childcare center. So, sorry. So I'm going to recuse myself.
Sort of same.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
And President Appel?
Yes. All right, thank you very much, Jay. And now we're going to go to our three discussion items. The first one is an update from the superintendent on school reopening.
Great, thank you very much. I'll just take a moment to queue up the presentation and we'll jump in. So as we have many evenings before, we'd like to offer a few updates about our phased reopening plans. This evening, I'm joined by Director of Community Relations and BSAP Natasha Berry. She'll walk us through information about the current public health status. This actually merits a slightly larger discussion this evening than it has in previous board presentations. So we'll linger there for a little longer and then walk through a number of additional updates and then look forward to hybrid learning. So we'll try to cover this terrain relatively quickly, like to provide some background information for folks who are watching at home right now about what decisions we've made, which decisions we haven't made, jump into a report on local health conditions, talk about our timeline for phased reopening, and then discuss several aspects of a hybrid learning model. We'll talk mostly about the elementary school level, but we will touch on middle and high school level as well by the time we end the presentation. We've been driven through the course of our planning, through our engagement, through our partnership with our labor unions by a set of guiding values that first and foremost include an emphasis on the health of our students, families, and staff. We are in a pandemic, and so we must, above all things, value safety. We've also been driven by a desire to protect the social and emotional well-being of our students and staff through all of this, through these difficult months, as well as create opportunities for equity, as much as we can design for that under these circumstances. We've been committed to providing a quality education, albeit one that's very new and different from what we want, and to regular communication and consultation with our families and staff as we approach key decisions along this path. For families who are watching, there are three key documents now available to our community on our website. Each one is really rich with information and provides, I think, a pretty clear view both of where we're going and where we are on this journey. Over on the left-hand side of the screen is the cover of what is called the Campus Safety Plan. This is a roughly 20-page document that summarizes important agreements that we've made with all four of our labor partners for the practices that we will put in place on our campuses, both for our employees and for our staff. So we encourage everybody to check that out. We've also been referring on a weekly basis to something we call our School Reopening Readiness Dashboard. This is a dashboard that we update on a weekly basis that's intended to create more transparency about the lines of work, either that we've completed or that are in front of us in order to be ready for permitted reopening of our schools. And then just in the last week, we've introduced a new tool, again, designed for transparency. This is called the COVID-19 Case Dashboard. And this is a look on a school-by-school basis at the COVID-19 school-associated COVID-19 cases that BUSD has experienced. As background information to this presentation, there are a number of key decisions that the Board of Education has already made, including one key decision to approach the reopening process in a phased manner, meaning a one-part-at-a-time manner. The Board has approved January 13th target date for reopening our pre-K programs, as well as transitional kindergarten through grade two. And then a week later is the target reopening date for grades three through five. We have not yet established a target reopening date for middle and for high schools. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Director Berry, and she'll provide an overview of the current change to our county's health status.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. In past presentations, I've shared more specific data about where we are in Berkeley and the county in terms of case numbers, but I felt that for tonight, we really just need this overview that shows where we were two weeks ago, which is the map on the left. This section of California with multiple different colors, which represent the tier system established in the state of California, with purple being the most widespread tier, the one that we were in for most of the summer. And we began moving out of it rather rapidly, actually. So, and then on the right, of course, we're completely purple, and I'll return to that in just a moment. But I wanted to just review with you that in accordance with this tier system, which established for the state of California, is driven by two primary metrics. There are some subsidiary metrics, but the two primary metrics are the number of daily new cases, as well as the positivity rate for COVID tests. And we were in that purple, highest widespread section during the summer. Under that condition, we could only have limited childcare camps, some special cohorts. And then there was a waiver process that was announced. That was released by Alameda County mid-September, a really long process, very complicated application process, simply to open elementary schools on a limited basis. We were just beginning to understand what that process required when we moved rather quickly into the next level down, the substantial level of spread, or otherwise known as the red tier. At that level, we were issued additional guidance for cohorts and small groups. And we began to, of course, we have throughout all of this been planning towards an eventual reopening. But we, none of us, I think, including the local health officers, expected such a rapid progression out of red into orange just two weeks later, one level down. And at that point, as many people have mentioned, we heard from the public health officers that elementary schools could reopen just a week later, October 13th, subject to multiple conditions. And there were very, very, very few schools that actually were able to do so, a few independent schools on a very limited basis. However, the requirements for reopening were so substantial, including having testing methodologies established, having contact tracing, all of that, which we had been working on, that required MOUs, for example, with testing companies. And meanwhile, as has also been mentioned, no additional resources being given to us to enact all of this. So while in theory, it would be possible to reopen after October 13th, there were a number of impediments. Nonetheless, as conditions continued to seem to improve, we were issued an additional option, was the possibility of middle schools possibly opening in early November. And again, no public school district in the county has been able to meet those requirements. And then as we nonetheless continue to move forward, as the Board made its decision that we would possibly be able to reopen in early January, we bounced back into purple. And so that's, you see that map there, and I believe it's 41 of the California counties are now in purple. Governor Newsom has issued a put-on-the-brakes notification. And of course, the concern is that we don't entirely understand why things have gone so badly so quickly. There are some theories about Halloween being possibly a factor. There is a larger spread in 20s to 30-year-olds. I think part of the theory is that there's also pandemic fatigue, people are loosening a bit. And also, you know, businesses are opening up multiple opportunities for people to get together. And we are, of course, now looking at Thanksgiving, a time when we are all wanting to be with our families and recognizing that this is unfortunately the time that we really cannot do that. So meanwhile, we are still do have our small cohorts open at three sides that is still permitted under the purple guidance, but it is not clear, of course, where we will be by January. And that
So just to talk a little bit about what all of this means for schools generally. So it is the case, under the purple level of guidance, the most restrictive level of guidance, that these cohort-based programs are still permitted. There are a number of factors that school districts must sort of satisfy in order to maintain these cohort-based programs, including size limitations, including restrictions on the selection of specific students, and restrictions on the overall capacity of each individual campus that's hosting a cohort-based program. But they are permitted, and we do continue to maintain and, if possible, expand the number of cohorts available to our families during this purple phase. It is also then true, under the sort of purple level restrictions, that schools and districts that have not opened will then be required to remain closed. So we are in this category. We had not opened prior to the designation of purple, and so we must remain closed. Schools and districts that had opened are then permitted to remain open with modifications. And as Ms. Berry mentioned, there were no Alameda County school districts that were able to open. And so this particular sort of exception does not apply to any of our public school district counterparts. And then finally, there was, for a moment, an opportunity for schools and districts to apply for what was called the elementary waiver. Here in Alameda County, the Alameda County Public Health Department and the County Office of Education accepted waiver applications, however, never processed those waiver applications, never approved any waivers, and has, at least as we understand it right now, discarded the process of granting waivers while schools are in purple. So it may be the case that folks are wondering about the opportunity to write and receive a waiver during this round of our purple designation here in Alameda County that, as best we know, simply does not exist as an option. So what we do know is that we will not be permitted So what we do know is that we will not be permitted to open so long as the county or city is designated at this widespread level of case transmission. We have no way of knowing what January 13th will look like. And this is a good reminder to all of us that we are planning for a very public, a very dynamic public health environment. In which we should be expecting that changes can and will take place as we move throughout the winter and potentially even through the spring. What I thought I would comment on as well is the sort of timing requirements as they're currently established for school reopening. In order for the county to be designated at the next level, the red level. The county will have to satisfy those two key transmission metrics. Both that's the both the cases per 100,000 and the test positivity metrics that Ms. Berry mentioned previously. Those metrics have to be satisfied for two weeks and then the county would be re-designated as red. The county must then sustain those metrics for at least two additional weeks before schools would be permitted to reopen. So we're looking at sort of a month long or four week period in which the both of those key metrics would need to decline to red levels before we were permitted to reopen. We had in a previous board meeting discussed this timeline. This continues to be the timeline that we are working on, independent of the sort of return to the purple transmission tier. Among the key milestones in this timeline are the production, we hope, of a hybrid learning plan finalized for a hybrid learning plan by the time that we all leave for winter break. We'll have a lot of work to do. That's both in terms of staff preparation, facilities preparation. The design of an employee testing program and substantive discussions with our labor partners about the fine grain details of a hybrid learning plan. If we're able to hit that milestone towards the just before winter break, then we plan to come back with a series of town halls in which we'll describe in detail that hybrid learning program. And it would only be at that point that we would ask families to make a decision about which of the two models they would select. We are planning as part of the town hall process to query families, both who participate in the town hall and to send out a survey. To re-gauge among our families, the interest in either staying home in distance learning or returning to an on-campus experience. And we do that again because we notice over time that families perceptions of risk change. The last time we surveyed families for planning purposes was back on October 7th, and so we seek to do that again. With a short survey that will be going out very soon. And then finally, we move it down into January with the January 13th. The continued target date for our introduction of a hybrid experience for pre-K transitional kindergarten and grades one and two. Followed a week later by the hybrid learning in grades three and five. So to articulate very clearly, for all purposes, we continue to operate on this timeline. And continue to take seriously the Board's call that this will be the sort of the the planning directives to staff as we move forward. And then I should note, we have not decided on to target reopening date for middle and high schools. I'll comment a little bit on that just as we close out the presentation. As a very quick update, here are some numbers related to enrollment in the Phase One Program. These are the small cohorted support programs that we're now running on three of our elementary campuses. You can see how small these are, the number of seats we're offering on each campus. The number of offers that were made by each of the school's coordination of services team to families. The number of families who declined and then the percentage of total families who declined. You can see that the sort of rate of declining was varied across the three campuses. But was still significant, considering that this was a small cohorted approach. And that families were selected by their school teams for based on a particular set of factors. So that is perhaps revealing still a hesitation among some of our families to return to an on-campus environment. As we move forward into a series of town halls and as we work with the Board and our labor partners to finally articulate what a hybrid learning plan will look like. We're using a set of planning assumptions that we shared with families two weeks ago and that we'll discuss in more detail in our town halls. I will not read all of these aloud. I'll only focus on just the red text. Some of the assumptions that we think we're hearing from families and staff that were carrying with us as a district into our more detailed planning work is that we should be planning a hybrid model that will minimize disruptions to the current distance learning program. Given that such a large proportion of our families are indicating through our last survey that they would likely choose to remain in distance learning at this point. And of course, families' view on this, I imagine, will be impacted by the overall health conditions, both in the city and county. A second planning assumption is that a hybrid model should permit students and teachers to move as easily, as flexibly as possible back and forth between distance learning and hybrid learning. And this is again, sort of reflective of what we imagine to be sort of improvements and then declines in the overall public health status here locally. Planning assumption number three reads that we, assuming that a planning hybrid learning model should maintain current teacher classes and student groups as much as possible. To a point that Director Alper made earlier in the board meeting. We're also thinking that our plans should attempt to present a hybrid planning, a hybrid learning plan to the community prior to asking for a final enrollment decision. And so we're going to keep our surveying relatively light. Until we're able to articulate far more details about the experience that families would be asked to choose. A fifth planning assumption reads that we should attempt to design a hybrid learning model that won't lock families into a single point of time decision about which model to choose. But that would be flexible enough to permit families to go back and forth between hybrid, between distance learning and an on-campus learning experience, if we can achieve this. And then finally, we are hearing the sort of calls among many of our families that a hybrid learning model should account for the acute social and emotional needs that so many of our students are experiencing right now. And that this model should feature increased time for recreation and community building. So we'll jump now from those planning assumptions to models for hybrid learning. We will unpack these in more detail in our town halls. This is specifically an elementary model that we're looking at right now. One of these models that we think shows great promises, for lack of a better title, we're calling it distance learning in the morning and optional in-person learning in the afternoon. In this particular model, the school day would begin just as it does now. With core instruction taking place with classroom teachers through distance learning. That nine to 11:45 block represents essentially the core of our distance learning experience right now with classroom teachers. The middle of the day would then be set aside for lunch, a transition to school. Time to screen students as they come on campus, as well as providing teachers much needed time for preparation. And then in the afternoon, each day would feature either an A group or a B group coming onto campus roughly between the hours of 1:15 and 3:15. To experience a small cohorted instruction. This could look like differentiated instruction, enrichment, outside physical activity or even PE. And then followed after that at 3:15, all the way to six o'clock by a reopened after-school program. This particular model, we think, has some advantages and we recognize has some disadvantages. Among the advantages that we see in a model like this is its flexibility, that it can it can be adapted to a variety of public health conditions. That it will reduce the impact on staffing of the number of employees who will be accommodated to work from home because of underlying health conditions. We are concerned about staffing as we move forward into this next phase of school reopening. We also like about this model that we that it would provide a level of consistency for families who will elect to remain with distance learning for a whole variety of reasons. And this model would permit us to utilize cohorting, or rather to maximize the safety impact of cohorting. By having students working in smaller groups without moving from group to group or from teacher to teacher. Among the disadvantages, many families will note that it doesn't do a lot to sort of change distance learning. It still is an element of this model. But please keep in mind that it will be an element of any hybrid learning model that we and any other district introduces at this point. We will need to contend with the challenge of identifying substitute staffing for those afternoons. If a particular staff member is accommodated to stay at home because of a health condition. We may lose components of our current distance learning program. That specifically may be the small group support and the parent outreach. Those may not be possible if we if we move to this particular model. And then we're not quite sure what it's going to look like to both ask families to move students in the middle of the day onto campus. We will have limited transportation available, but we're not sure what level of this inconvenience this will represent for some of our families. We have been considering a number of other models. I'm not sure at this point that we would identify them as leading contenders. And we are still not quite convinced they're even viable at this point, given a number of complicated factors. Two of those models, again, for lack of a better title, include a hybrid model that would bring students on campus for two days per week in an A group and a B group. That model is represented over on the right hand side of the screen in this particular model. A student might come to campus Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday would be virtual and then the second group of students would come to campus for Thursday and Friday. And then there's another version, very similar version of this, in which we would divide school days into an AM group and a PM group. These are also have been considered, they have among their advantages, a potential increase in on-campus time. They have some significant disadvantages and ones that we're not sure we've got solutions for right now. Including a far more acute need as it relates to substitute staffing. What I mean by this is that as a teacher is accommodated for legitimate and legal reasons to stay at home because of underlying personal health issues. We would be required to find substitute staffing. And substitute staff, of course, are not the same as a classroom teacher. And are more difficult to find right now because of the difficulties of this pandemic. This particular model would not permit cohorting to the extent that the other one does. And for some of our staff, like specialist teachers, we may not be able to offer cohorting in this particular model. This model would be very difficult to adapt to another surge in COVID transmission if that were to take place sometime after we reopen. May also lead to the regrouping of students from one class to another, from one teacher to another, something we're hearing many families would be opposed to. And then very likely this model could lead to increased independent work. When students are not on campus, they may find themselves with far less online support and far more independent work to take care of. So we count these among the disadvantages. We've thought seriously about these models and so we share this as sort of where we are at this point. Speaking still in general terms about the sort of direction we think we'll be taking. To mention middle and high school, which I know is of great interest to the high school students who are joining us this evening, same as it is to the high school families. It may be this first model that I introduced sort of represents the best way forward for a hybrid. Excuse me, for a hybrid model at the secondary level, both middle and high school. Just to review, this model would essentially keep intact the current distance learning experience with its three periods per day. But then feature a transition to school and afternoon activities taking place between roughly one and three o'clock in the afternoon. This would be followed at least at the middle school by our after-school program. We don't offer an after-school program at the high school. But could be followed at the high school by after-school clubs and other types of activities. Again, one advantage here is that it would actually permit cohorting in a secondary environment. Every other hybrid model that we've looked at essentially has students moving between classes, breaking groups, moving between different teachers. Something which I think is probably could be defined as the most risky element of any school reopening. So we are, I think, as most folks now know, hosting a series of town halls beginning tomorrow night. We're looking forward to engaging our community in this discussion, but in far more detail. We're hosting two elementary level meetings tomorrow night, the first beginning at six o'clock. That first meeting is taking place in English. And then an identical meeting for elementary families who are Spanish speakers that follows the meeting and takes place at 7:15 and will end at 8:15 tomorrow night. Immediately following Thanksgiving break, we will host a town hall for the families of middle school age students. That's on December 1st. And then we'll be engaging with high school students at three o'clock on December 3rd and with high school families at six o'clock also on December 3rd. We're looking forward to all of that engagement. So we'll pause there. We welcome discussion and questions from the Board and really do appreciate the opportunity to provide the update.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stevens. That was very written information. So I'm looking to see if any of, oh, I have Student Director Miller.
Hi, thank you so much for that presentation. It was, I think it was a good amount of information and what the community needs right now. I have two concerns, just quickly, the first being with the first kind of model where the distance learning is intact and then students would come in the second half of the day. Is that second half of the day instruction or is it just like academic support and just meeting social needs of students?
I think it would depend on the Level Director Miller. So at the elementary level, I imagine elementary teachers providing additional instruction, differentiated support, enrichment activities, as well as recreation and socialization. At the high school level, that I think gets a little bit trickier. You take far more classes at the high school level. You have far more teachers. And so what I don't imagine at the high school level is that a student could take multiple classes going in person from class to class to class. I imagine things more like advisory. I could imagine something like a term-by-term club opportunity. Things like that to be determined, but I'm not imagining that it would look like a class schedule at the high school level in the afternoons.
Okay. And then my second question is, or my second concern was more was about high school levels. It is very important we get activities like clubs and certain our and our programs that can be safely done and sports that can be safely done on campus, but I would has, I would be cautious to make that the entirety of the distance learning plan for high school and middle school students, because when we think of hybrid learning, we think of instruction and we think of academic support. And I think those activities, they should just be. I mean, I feel like they should just be a given, like they should be something we should be allowing on campus anyways, whether it hot where whether high school, hopefully high schoolers can go back by the end of this year. But if health, if the health guidelines don't permit it, like these should be things that we are doing anyways. So I would just be cautious to make allowing these activities to happen, the entirety of a hybrid learning plan. That was just all I have to say about that.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to call on Director Liva Cutler.
Thank you for the presentation. Superintendent, I know a lot of work and thinking has gone behind this. So I have a question. On the dates that were picked for launching, they're on a Wednesday. The 13th in elementary schools, as you've noted, are Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, not Wednesday. Why, why are we picking the 13th and the 20th when children are not in school? Oops.
I needed myself, sorry. Thanks for that question. So, so we did deliberate about the sort of intended target, the target opening dates. We deliberately selected the week after the return from winter break. So that we had sort of in effect what amounts to a quarantine period. Giving ourselves sort of a week so that folks can be back in the community. And ideally, you know, if they've traveled, have an opportunity just to sort of stay put. We selected the Wednesday start date mainly as an opportunity to provide both training and testing for employees. Before folks began to come onto campus. So we're imagining that those two particular days will be intensive onsite training for staff about safety procedures. As well as COVID testing for everybody who will be on, for staff who will be on site. So that, that, that's the rationale for the Wednesday start versus let's say a Monday start.
And then the schedule, when you have the schedule of the morning and then the afternoon. The morning ending at 1:15 and then the afternoon coming in at 1:15. There's no time that's being left in between for student, for cleanup disinfection for the next group or they're going to be two different areas of the of the site.
That's a great question. So in most of the, well, in each of the models, we imagine that some of the classroom space will need to be used by two groups in a day. So in that first model, that would be true. The afternoon group would leave, the after-school program would stay. So there would need to be a period of at least half an hour in between those room uses so that those can be cleaned. We have purchased what are called electrostatic cleaners. These are essentially sort of, they look like jet packs. But essentially allows our custodians to go in and disinfect a space very rapidly. So there would be a break. I haven't represented it on this, this very simplified schedule, but we would envision a disinfection break between the use of a common space.
And it has happened to me that in a classroom, I've had a teacher out. And because we're keeping the stable group, what plans are there when we don't have that many substitutes to call and we can't mix groups and and we're trying to keep stable, both the teachers and the cohorts. What is the plan if the teacher is not COVID related, but had, you know, doctor appointment? doctor appointment? So what's the plan in terms of who's going to lead that, that classroom and the afternoon?
Yep. You know, I, just to be perfectly candid, we're, we're contending with this very issue right now as we open up the cohort groups. We're finding it very difficult to provide substitute staffing in this particular setting for a number of reasons, including the availability of subs and then the challenge about trying to maintain bubble groups. So in the current model, our current cohort system, if a staff member is out, then we have to let those families know that they just can't come in for the day. We would hope to do better than that by the time we get to January and actually have an available pool of substitutes. And then we'll need to think very hard about how we prevent substitutes from becoming vectors in transmission from group to group. And we don't have a great solution to that right now. It may mean that substitutes will have to take a break in between their work with groups.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna call on you, Julie Sinek.
Thank you. Couple of questions. You, you mentioned a minute ago that the half-hour break in between would be cleaned with whatever the terminology you used by custodial staff. So the teachers wouldn't be expected to clean in between, because it seems like to go through multiple classrooms in thirty minutes of one custodial staff per school seemed a little Herculean. Just wondering what the thought is. So that, I, so I've got a couple of questions. That was the first one.
Yeah, so we, we've had sort of conversations that, you know, with our labor partners, that all of us together will need to be involved in some form of cleaning. And we'll have to specify sort of what constitutes light cleaning, meaning just maintaining classrooms clean. And we'll, we'll have some expectations, I think, for our teachers to maintain clean classrooms. While we're also not expecting teachers to be engaged in that sort of disinfection of entire spaces or the disinfection of spaces or common spaces around the school. We don't have specific schedules worked out yet. All of that is still in front of us. We offer these models just as a general view about where we're going. But it will need to be the case that if there's a change in group between spaces, that that has to be cleaned. And if we can't do it in the half an hour, then we lengthen the break so that that cleaning can take place.
So the next question, well, a comment and then a question is, so with the town hall meetings that are coming up, I really want to appreciate you and whatever other staff are participating in these five, I think, town hall meetings. I'm really excited that there's a Berkeley High student one in the afternoon that I'm assuming student director Miller will help lead that charge. But when you present these, these scenarios for feedback, knowing that it's not necessarily set in stone, right? So maybe, could you talk a little bit about like what the diet, what, what you're hoping to get out of the town hall meetings with kind of the, these frameworks that may continue to evolve over the course of the next few weeks? And then I'll just ask my last question, which is kind of an easy one, is I think in the last school board, in the last board meeting, you mentioned also having an educator cohort or an educator group? And could you talk about where that sits?
Yeah. So in terms of our objectives for the town halls, we're hoping to do a few things. We'd like to get feedback on those planning assumptions that I shared with you. We think that they will work for a broad segment of our community, but we want to, want to confirm that. You know, those planning assumptions are coming from a lot of listening, both here at the board meeting, lots of email exchanges. And so, so we think we've got it right, but we want to confirm that. And then we'll be both presenting this model and then asking fairly detailed questions about the features of the model so that we're equipped for our more detailed planning, which will follow the Thanksgiving break with more specific feedback about these features. It may not be that we can build every feature into the model, but it's going to be immensely helpful for us to have that kind of feedback data about not one model, but features of the model that ultimately inform a final plan. And then in terms of engaging staff, we're still working on these things. Today, we did send out a first staff-wide survey that includes the information that I just shared with you. It's got these models, it's got the planning assumptions. And as a first round of getting feedback from educators, we're asking folks just to go fill out a survey to help us understand how close we are with our planning assumptions and how educators would be impacted by the models that we just shared.
Thank you.
All right, I have a couple, I have one question, and that is, in the models that you showed us, I just, I'm a little confused whether like the A group and the B group, are the A group going to be listening in when the B group are in person? Or are they going to be completely separate?
In the model that I shared, when the A group is on campus,
Like in the afternoon?
Yeah, in the afternoon, that's right. The B group would be doing one of two things. So they'd either be working on assignments independently, what we've been calling synchronous work. And then all of our enrichment, our specialty teachers will maintain their distance learning online support. And so afternoon enrichment classes would continue to be available. Now, those are not every single day. They're interspersed throughout the week, but that would operate. We have yet to think about sort of another set of teachers, including our RTI teachers, ELD teachers, literacy coaches, who would very likely be working remotely and being, and would provide support during that afternoon period as well. President Appel, you're muted right now.
Oh, that's okay. I was just listening to you. That, thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
Yes, yes, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Have we done any check-in with the teachers, the parents, our students that are right now coming in? In terms of how it's going for them?
Not a formal check-in. I know that the principals themselves are talking daily with the families who are coming in. I've been on location about four of the days that have been, that we've been open and we've been open about eight or nine days in total. So, so we're getting lots of information from staff about what's working, what's not, lots of information, mostly anecdotal at this point about what's working. But the program is still only in its halfway through its second week right now. And so we haven't sort of, you know, tried to collect information in a formal way.
Would be great to have that the next time you present, so that new board members can also see. And if there's a possibility without showing the pictures of the children, what the classrooms look like, I think it would help our public also in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Leva Cutler. Are there other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none then. Thank you for that update. Superintendent Stevens. Now, I believe the next thing on the agenda is the policy for transgender and gender non-conforming students. This is the first reading and I'm actually going to present it. But Superintendent Stevens, do you have the the presentation?
Yes, I do. I'll just take a second to queue it up.
Great. And I'll just ask you to switch. Right, it's nothing fancy. But I wanted to just kind of go through this agenda, I mean, go through this policy with folks because it's, I don't know, it's a little bit different and it goes further than we've gone before, so I just wanted to make sure people understood it. So it's called the transgender and gender nonconforming students policy. Can you switch slides? Go to the next slide, please. So the purposes that the, that the the policy committee put forward were that we provide education in an education environment free of stigma and discrimination for all certain students, regardless of gender identity or expression. We've talked about this for other students, but this is specifically around gender identity or expression. Two, to facilitate compliance with local, state and federal laws, specifically concerning bullying, harassment, privacy and discrimination. And then third, to ensure that all students have the opportunity to express themselves and live authentically. So I think the policy that we've put together really attempts in a really strong way to do that. So there are a few definitions and I wanted to go through these definitions really briefly because I think not everyone is actually completely familiar with them and the idea is going to be that over time, our staff will become familiar with them, but I just wanted to tell you all what they are. So the first is gender identity. I'm going to read the definitions because I think that's the best way to communicate this. So gender identity is a person's deeply held sense or psychological knowledge of their own gender, regardless of the gender they were assigned at birth. So everyone has a gender identity and for most of us, it is the gender that was assigned at birth, but not for everybody. Second is transgender and transgender describes people whose gender identity is different from that in which they were assigned at birth. And then gender expression refers to the way a person expresses their gender. So that usually for most of us, we interpret like clothing, hairstyles, activities, mannerisms. And then the final term, which I think is new to most people, is gender nonconforming. What this means is a person whose behavior or appearance doesn't conform to prevailing cultural or social expectations about what is appropriate to the female or male sex they were assigned at birth. So this includes the students who use their them pronouns. And gender nonconforming includes students who identify themselves as non-binary or gender expansive. So I think you might have noticed that Tris used the term gender expansive, I think, in their testimony, and I think an increasing number of students are actually identifying as gender nonconforming in Berkeley and other places as well, but I think we've seen a lot of that in Berkeley. Can you, we move to the next. So we've attempted to do, to meet our goals in several different ways. First of all, we have made it really clear that students will be, well, that, that people, that the district will recognize students' privacy and that the records will, where possible, reflect their gender identity and rather than their sex assigned at birth. There are some places actually, like some official surveys where if they haven't made an official legal transition, we need to use their sex assigned at birth, but those are very limited and none of our local records require that. And so we're going to be very conscientious of making sure that we do respect students' gender and pronouns. We want to really encourage, well, we're mandating actually, staff members to use the appropriate pronouns for students. So if they are transgender, then use, you know, whatever, whatever the pronoun is that a student prefers, that they are, uses, that we will, that those pronouns will be used. So for a lot of the gender nonconforming students, that is using they/them. And I know that can be really challenging for those of us who didn't grow up in this, with this as being a part of our lives. But I think one of the goals of this policy is to help train folks so that they are comfortable using students' proper pronouns. I'm going to go to the next slide. Okay, so one of the things that's very, I think, kind of unique about this policy and in some ways far-reaching are gender segregated activities. So if, I don't know if folks are aware of this, but there are a lot of, a lot of times in which, during which teachers or educators or others use gender segregated activities, like girl, girls and boys line up in separate lines or there's, there's many different examples. And this policy says that we only do that when it's necessary. So it's not like it prohibits all, but it really puts, it really, you know, like there'll be no reason to line up students in lines by what we perceive as who are girls and who are boys and make students choose, when we can choose it, when we can have another way to have them line up or to engage in different activities. If there are activities that are, that where it is determined that the gender segregated activities is important for the educational goal, then they'll be allowed, but those are going to be very few and far between. And then the restrooms, students will be permitted to use, I'm not permitted, but we will be assumed that students will use the restrooms that conform with their gender identity if they identify as a male or female. And then there will also be gendered bathrooms, at least one in each school.
Judy, your sound went off. Judy?
We can't hear you.
She looks maybe frozen.
Frozen.
I think she froze.
I just give her, give her a minute.
Ty, are you texting her?
Yeah.
Great.
Where'd she go?
She probably popped out to pop back in.
Well, she's gonna have to rejoin the meeting.
Okay, all right. Hold on, everyone won't be back as soon as President Appel gets back. Stand up and stretch, everybody.
Right, actually Judy and I had talked about trying to take a moment, take five minutes at least to do that. With the new board, I hope you do that.
I was gonna say, in your, almost your last meeting, you finally proposed some self-care for us.
You should, but you put it on the agenda next.
Dr. Stevens, can you take over for, for now? President Appel's having trouble getting on and she's asked that you continue on.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
I'm sure, I'm sure she'll make it back, but if you can, yeah, if you can go for it.
I'm sure. And I haven't, I haven't had a chance to review these slides. These were prepared by President Appel, but was involved in, in supporting the writing of the, the policy. There's a number of elements of the policy that also would ask our staff to be conscientious about the way that activities are organized around gender. This can look like sports, these can look like playground activities, the organization of classroom groups or physical education activities. The policy also asks the district to be explicit about rules, policies and practices that have the effect of isolating students by gender or that may be exclusive of students who fall into the categories that we previously described. One element of the policy has to do with training for staff. And this is specifically about the needs of students who identify as transgender or gender nonconforming, helping staff understand that the experience of these students and others can be very different from their own upbringing or from their own personal experience. And yet it is the expectation of the district that all of our classrooms will be welcoming and inclusive spaces. And with that, I can sort of move us over to the discussion. I'll communicate, I'll continue to communicate with President Appel as she's trying to log back onto the meeting. Director Leva Cutler was also integral to the writing of this policy and we had a number of other folks who helped, including Miles Miller, other VHS students, and then we received a good deal of help from other staff members who aren't here. So we're very happy to have had the opportunity to do this work in the policy subcommittee and bring it here for first reading.
Yes. Thank you. I want to thank, I'm sorry that Judy's not here, but this is a recorded meeting. So I really want to give thanks to Judy, because this has been on our policy calendar for a couple of years. So we're pretty happy to be able to do this towards the end of our term, but nonetheless, it's here. And also how it's going to be rolled out with the district. I think it's really important for not, not only our students, but our families and our teachers to also really embrace this policy and this practice that is now before us. And also, you know, one of the things that I had, you know, and I hope that this comes with this policy is also a rubric to, to begin to dive deep, what is it, dive deeper into how we select our curriculum with our students and in looking at the curriculum that is biased in gender and in race. And this also flows into, you know, the Black Lives Matter and the, the vision that we have for our district that we need to look at those books to argue them, but also to push them aside and bring back the, bring the voice out of our marginalized students and that is by race and, and gender. So I look forward to how Berkeley will keep moving this forward. This is just a baby step. This is just a baby step in a large process that needs to happen in our school district. So I want to congratulate Judy on this and bringing this force to the board.
Thank you, Director Leva Cutler. Dr. Stevens, is there any update on President Appel?
She is still unable to log on. She has texted to say that it's still not working, unfortunately.
Okay. It is Ms. Tyra's, oh, there she is. I saw her for a second. There she is.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Can we hear you?
Can you, President Appel, can you hear us?
Unmute yourself.
Not hear you. That's so funny. That's the first time I've ever presented at the board meeting and of course I got cut off in the middle. But I'm sure that Superintendent Stevens did an excellent job of completing my presentation.
Yeah, and Director Leva Cutler is just praising you. President Appel, she was praising you.
Oh, that's nice.
Bringing this forward to the board.
Oh, I was, well, I see, well, I'll turn it back over to you, President Appel.
No, I mean, were you going to say something, Ty?
Well, okay, well, I was just, so I wanted to thank you too, and, and I know I was going to say that when I remember in December of 2013, I wasn't on the board yet, I think I was running for school board and, and you led the, the passage, the creation and the passage of our current policy to, to, to both honor and protect our transgender students. And I remember, I, I remember that meeting was in the old board chambers and I mean, it's, it makes me nostalgic for being in the same room as other people, but there were so many people, there were so many students there celebrating the passage of that policy, which at the time was a very, and still is, very forward and progressive policy and, and I remember back then that being sort of a signature accomplishment of yours and, and other, of course, your colleagues on the board at the time. And so I'm really, you know, happy and, and proud that we were able to, that you all were able to bring, that you and Director Leva Cutler and Dr. Stevens were able to bring this new policy to us in time to review it and hopefully pass it before you leave the board. And, and that does lead to my one question, which is, it wasn't clear to me, how, does this policy supersede our existing policy, which I think is 5157? Well, that's my question. Because we do have the existing policy that covers some of the same things.
Well, I, I think this will supersede that because I think that was, that was more narrow in its focus. But I will review that before the next meet, before the second to have a definite answer.
Okay.
And it's funny because I actually found the photos from that, from that meeting and I saw you sitting there in the audience. I was like, oh my gosh, that's so funny. Yep.
I was there.
You were there.
Julie.
Who, do you want, you want to now lead this discussion, President Appel?
Oh, sure. Julie, do you have a question or a comment?
I have a comment and a question. I also want to extend appreciation for all the work you've put into this and I remember in 2013 too, and all the students who were there and it was, it was, you know, it was cutting edge at the time. It was really forward thinking. I don't think any other school district had done anything, if I recall. And I think the fact that it's being updated and is getting stronger is just a testament to your tenacity around this, but and your vision around it. And so I really appreciate the work. But I also, I'm not, and I also know that policy only goes so far as how we can implement it. So, and there's, I think, a significant amount of training and cultural change that's going to need to happen around this. And I don't know, Dr. Stevens, you know, what you've thought about, I mean, it doesn't impact at all whether, you know, support for the policy is phenomenal, but I don't want it to just be on paper. I want to make sure that, you know, even in the land of Zoom, you know, that we begin to look at what the cultural changes are we need to make in our institutions and in our community so that students really do feel thoroughly welcomed and accepted and for who they are and how they identify. So just wondering whether you've had some time to think about how you, how you will roll this out.
Some, yes. I do agree with you that the, the way that this is ultimately organized to success is going to make the difference. You know, what I do imagine is, as we turn the corner into budget season, that the board's priorities must form the sort of backbone of our spending plan. The board is really clearly articulating a set of priorities with this policy. And so if it were to pass, I'd want the opportunity to work with staff to think about how to build some organizational muscle so that this policy can be enacted. So for example, there are resources required for staff training. There's potentially staff resources as we think about the selection and use of curriculum. There are facilities components to this particular policy. And I think there's the need to engage students in an ongoing way and thinking about the impact of our organization and its physical settings and its classrooms on transgender students. So all of those things now need to be thought out. The policy is the gesture, the policy is the vision. And so you should, the board could expect to hear from me over the course of the spring about how we actually implement it. I will, and I offer this quick caveat in that, that is, you know, COVID makes everything harder. And the amount of staff attention required to school reopening is going to, I think, slow most other work. I should mention that, but I don't think that it's going to dismantle the work to, to do this.
Right. So I think also drawing upon our internal expertise and whether it's through, you know, an affinity group of, of trans folks and gendered, you know, people who are identifying in different ways and looking at our community-based partners so that we are actually having people part of the rollout being folks who really understand the issues, I think are going to be really important too. So thank you. Thank you, President Appel.
Thank you so much for that. And I think you were actually on the board last time. I noticed you run up on the dais.
Yes, I was. I think I voted for it.
Good. And I really appreciate that. And I will also say that I'd be happy to volunteer after I'm done being on the board, helping to get those people together for training and helping you develop trainings. Because I agree that that's going to be critical. So I think that this item was really just a first reading and we'll vote on this on the second. So, oh, Khadija Brown, I'm sorry, Director Brown, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did have my hand up. Thank you. And thank you for this presentation this evening and for the work that you and Director Leva Cutler did to present, to be able to present it to the board tonight. I did have a question around the trainings and I was grateful to see that they were training, that you suggested trainings for our staff. But I was also wanting to know, Dr. Stevens, have you thought about gender-inclusive toolkits to maybe purchase for our students? To see how that, or have you thought about how that would be rolled out, maybe similarly to how, how, I can't even remember what it's called now, the rollout around cyberbullying and how those trainings happen with our students? Are you also thinking about, or how are you thinking rather about ensuring that our students receive, receive training and information to make sure that our, our, our schools are gender-inclusive?
Yeah, I, I see that sort of the, the work moving forward if the policy is passed. I mean, first we'll need to begin to think about a, a set of accompanying regulations, administrative regulations that further specify the actions in the policy so that that, I imagine, is one body of work to take on. A second, as I just man- mentioned, is then to think about a rollout plan with an associated timeline and a budget. I haven't had the opportunity to think at that level of detail about the components of that plan. And that's where we'd love the opportunity to come back to the board when we've had the chance to think more deeply about it.
Thanks. I just didn't see that student trainings are mentioned. I wanted to be, be sure that we included it as well, because it would be just as necessary for our students to receive those trainings as it would for our teachers or staff.
You know, that, that's a really excellent point, Director Brown, and I'm wondering, maybe you and I can work on a line to add to the training component that wouldn't be specific because as Superintendent Stevens said, the, the, like, maybe we need to train our staff first, but I do think you're right that there needs to be something in here about student training. So why don't you and I put our heads together and we could suggest some language to that?
Are you suggesting that that would be part of policy or that it would be part of the AR that the staff would develop?
Well, I think that probably
The administrative regulation. And how this
I mean, I guess I think, I'm answering your question. I think that for me, the commitments to student training should be in the policy. Maybe not how to do it, but just that we, that we believe we should do it.
Yeah, then when it goes, then it goes back to policy committee, doesn't it?
No, we can amend it. We can amend it at the board, at the full board.
Okay.
Are you open to doing that, Khadija?
Yeah, most definitely. I, I, I was actually curious to know which venue it needed or avenue it needed to go down as well to make sure it happens. So however it works, and even if amending the policy wouldn't be the best decision also, just ensuring that we're having the conversation, that we're ready to, to implement it, whatever avenue we need to take to ensure that we can vote on it and make sure it happens.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and we'll come up with a line that we want to recommend is amended when it's in front of the full board on the second and people can either vote it up or down. I mean, vote that amendment up or down. Okay. Great. Thank you all. And I have to also thank you Superintendent Stevens because you have been a great help in putting this together and I really appreciate your commitment, your clear commitment to these students.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll be known.
All right. Oh, right. I'm, I'm facilitating. Okay, so we have our third discussion item, which is, I can't find my agenda, but take it away. What is it?
Update on BUSD's Black Lives Matter.
All right, update on, on the Black Lives Matter resolution. Who's taking the lead? So are you doing this?
I'm just, I'm just going to introduce this presentation and then I've got, I'm joined by a number of colleagues who will also sort of take part in this presentation. So just as a little bit of background for folks who are watching, back over the summer, I believe it was in June, the board approved a resolution called in support of Black Lives Matter. The resolution had a number of action items associated with it. It also called on staff to present an update to the board on a quarterly basis about our progress to implement the resolution. So we are of course laboring under difficult circumstances right now to move forward all work. But we do want to provide the board with this update. You'll notice as we walk through the elements of the resolution, we've organized the slide deck just to, to match the action items of the resolution that, that some items have really robust progress, some items are completed, some items are underway and some items have not yet started. And so we want to sort of signal to the board exactly where we are on each one of these. I'm joined by a number of folks this evening who will each take a small part in this presentation. That includes Natasha Berry, who spoke earlier. She's the Director of BSEP and Community Relations, Bajay Tiara, who's the Associate Superintendent of Education Services, and Calligari, who is the Supervisor of our Office of Family Equity and Engagement, Tom Reinhardt, who introduced himself earlier. He's the Coordinator of Brea, the Berkeley Research Evaluation and Assessment Department, and Adalita Martinez, who is new to the district this year and is our Coordinator of Professional Development. So with that, we will jump in and review the elements of this resolution. And to start, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Berry.
Thank you. Good evening again. So the first item in the resolution was that as a symbol of Berkeley Unified School District's ongoing commitment to focus unerringly on the success of African-American students, families and staff members and to serve as a visible affirmation of the movement for racial equality in the United States, a Black Lives Matter banner shall be displayed prominently in the chambers of the Board of Education. We have done that. It is displayed there. However, we are not meeting there. Except for occasionally Executive Cabinet has been meeting there, but the board is not meeting there. So we decided that we would create these virtual banners. I have one as my background right now is a Zoom background. There's actually a couple of different ones. Here's another one. And so that piece has been achieved.
Thank you. And then I'm going to turn it now over to Associate Superintendent Bajay Tiara and she'll walk us through several more of these elements.
Thank you. In accordance with and celebrating the Black Lives Matter Resolution, the Black, excuse me, the Annual Black Lives Matter at School Week of Action will take place during the month of February to coincide and augment Black History Month. While we are in the planning stage of the Black Lives Matter Week, meetings and discussions are underway. Teacher equity leaders at the elementary and middle school levels have engaged in a review and discussion of the resolution. All schools will have dedicated time, space, activities and celebration of Black history, Black people, including contributions to the fields of literature, STEM, arts, politics, just to name a few. Our Director of Schools, Debbie Dean, is working with school principals to proactively plan activities for the week of February 1st. Slide please. The Ed Services Department is committed to supporting the Black Lives Matter Resolution through ongoing curating of resources through relevant pedagogy and current issues to develop professional development for teachers and ongoing family support. Our equity continues to be at the core professional development. At the October 20, excuse me, at the October 12th District-wide Professional Development Day, all elementary school teachers engaged in a morning session that addressed community building through the lens of identity. Best practices were presented by our own BSUD teachers. At this, on the same day, all middle school teachers engaged in a morning of sessions focused on abolitionist teaching. During the session, participants identified and learned about the four goals of abolitionist teaching and participants were presented with concrete examples from BUSD teachers on best practices for implementation. A slide please. Additionally, the Elementary School Literacy Network are engaging in a book study on Goldie Muhammad's cultivating genius. This work started earlier this month. The research presents a teaching and learning model through the lens of historical African-American literary societies. In partnership with our Office of Family Equity, Family Engagement Equity, three family support seminars have been hosted. Topics have included building student agency, self-awareness and empowerment, helping our children thrive in distance learning, Black families in BUSD supports and celebrations featuring Dr. Khalid White. I'd like to introduce our Professional Development Coordinator, Lita Martinez, who will share the next phase of this work that will take place in the coming months. Slide please. Lita?
Yes, and so the work is going to continue in terms of, we do have a district-wide TKAPD time with teachers on January 25th, where with middle school, our goal is to deepen our learning that we already engaged in in October around the four goals that are identified in the equity framework of abolitionist teaching. And again, including concrete examples and application and processing time. For elementary, we'll be introducing abolitionist teaching through the four goals of the equity framework and continuing to build in concrete examples, application and planning time. For January 27th, our district-wide elementary collaboration will continue to reflect on focal student writing, which continues to consist of teachers bringing, focusing on students specifically. They have to bring work samples that they reflect on and then plan next steps around at least one African-American student or, or a student who's an English learner or a student who's and/or who's a student with an IUP and where we're going deep into, through a data protocol, to engage in really reflecting and analyzing student writing. With our Equity League teams, we'll continue to reflect and plan with regards to instruction and how they bring learning back to their sites through the lens of equity and abolitionist teaching and engage their site teams around that and also resources. We will provide resources that support Black Lives Matters Week and Black History Month. In our Literacy Coach Network, we'll continue to reflect and plan around In our Literacy Coach Network, we'll continue to reflect and plan around cultivating genius and Goldie Muhammad's. Equity framework in terms of abolitionist teaching. And last, we'll continue to support and work in collaboration with OFI around our sessions. We've already facilitated two of them. And it's kind of a two of a six-part series in terms of building student agency, self-awareness and empowerment for our families.
Thank you very much. We move on. Another element of the Black Lives Matter Resolution has to do with designing what's, what's called in the Resolution of Black Joy Campaign. We note that this element of the resolution has not yet started. We will plan to get this started once we're back from winter break. Um, and that very likely is going to look like a search for community partners who can help us design this campaign for our classroom students and educators. Uh, and then we'll turn it over to Anne Calligary to talk about work that is coming out of the OFI office and that corresponds with the resolution. Anne?
Greetings, everyone. And so in addition to the family support seminars, the Office of Family Engagement and Equity. Has a joint project with the City of Berkeley with Nina Goldman of City of Berkeley's 2020 Vision. We, we jointly believe that building the capacity of the leaders uh in our schools to partner with our Black African American parents. It's critical to reshaping and building our schools' success for our African American students. So to do so, we hired RT Fisher Educational Enterprises. Some of you know a part of that enterprise area, the African American Regional Educational Alliance. Because that organization is unapologetically focused on improving outcomes for our Black African American children. So far, we have, well, first of all, we have planned three work sessions. We have had two work sessions so far. Our first work session took place on the 20th of, of October. Uh, where we brought parents, guardians and our school leaders together. The second took place last night. Our sessions averaged about 75 parents, guardians and, and school leaders. And there were these sessions for conversations were facilitated by skilled professionals from RT Fisher Enterprises. We just wanted to say that we realize that this project will not reverse the lifetime of inequities. In just a few sessions, however, uh, we felt that getting this conversation started is crucial. To ensuring the outcomes that I know that we all want for our African American students. And so we're continuing uh with this project, collaborating with Debbie Dean, um, our Director of K8 Schools. And I did not add before that this is, we're starting with TK8 and we're hoping to go on to the high school with this project. So I'm really looking forward to presenting more to you about the outcomes of the parent principal learning circles.
Thank you very much, Ms. Calligary. Um, and then we turn back to Ms. Berry.
Can you, Dr. Stevens? Okay.
It was you that time, not me. So we now turn back to Natasha Berry. She can provide an update on the renaming process for Jefferson and Washington Elementary Schools.
Thank you. So the next item in the resolution was that the Berkeley Unified School Board commit to a renaming process for both Jefferson and Washington Elementary Schools, following our current. Facilities naming policy and we did embark on that. In fact, this board heard an update on that just in October. So I won't go back through over those first few steps, but just let you know that we have progressed since then through. The community engagement process with the school formerly known as Jefferson. And just this week, the Superintendent's Naming Advisory Committee. Met this Monday to review all of the input and put together a recommendation, which I am currently in the process of writing. So that this board on December 2nd will have all of that input and the recommendation available to them for a new name for Jefferson. And then the Washington process will begin after that. That'll be a decision to be made as to when to launch that. Thank you.
Um, and one of the elements of the board's resolution reads that the board will commit itself not only to address the symbols of institutional racism and white supremacy, but also to proactively identify and address biases, practices, policies and institutional barriers. That perpetuate injustice and inequality in our schools and community. To that end, we now have scheduled a series of board retreats to begin in December and work our way through March of this next year. With an agenda that is explicitly centered on the role of the governance team and equity. So we're looking forward to that work as we move into the new year. Um, and then as well, we, another element of the, the resolution asks that we engage in work to proactively identify class and cultural biases as well as the practices, policies and institutional barriers that negatively influence student learning. Um, in the interest of time, I'll move ahead. Um, and so we are working right now to identify a partner. Who can support the, the finalization of an African American success framework. And in the process of engaging community partners and parents to develop that framework. Launch an African American Community Advisory Council. And we look forward to starting both of those projects as we turn the corner on the new year. Uh, and then to talk about, I think, the final element of the board's Black Lives Matter Resolution, I'll turn it over to Dr. Tom Reinhardt, who again is the Coordinator of our Brea Department.
Evening, everyone. So Brea has been doing some preliminary analysis of various academic achievement data as well as community input. And going a little bit beyond the academic achievement, I think it's important to dig into some of the. Structural and systemic systems that are in place in Berkeley to, to determine the discrepancies that exist for Black students. So the following list is some proposed topics that could be investigated as well as some preliminary examples. And these are both proposed and preliminary because the thinking will evolve the more. Information that the department uncovers. So for example, we have a topic of chronic absenteeism. Where we could investigate the distance that students have to travel to get to school. Of course, that's not an issue currently, but we know that absenteeism. Has been a challenge for our Black students during distance learning as well. Second is opportunity and access, and this involves the sort of pathways to advanced coursework, especially at the high school. And reviewing things like enrollment procedures, parent knowledge of programs. So this will, this will rely on interviews and analysis of enrollment data. And the third proposed topic right now is implicit bias and. This intersects with some of the other work that's ongoing in the district office. To identify how students are assigned for intervention services and behavioral referrals. Things like special education programs and other intervention and the effectiveness of those programs. So this can be investigated through some survey information as well as. Current behavioral referral processes and data. I look forward to presenting a draft of a more comprehensive investigation to the Board of Directors at a future date. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, and with that, we conclude, we do want to note that there's a few other sort of related projects that will be coming to the Board of Education very shortly. They include the presentation of a new literacy action plan. That is intended to support reading development among our younger students. Will as well be bringing to the board in December, something called the Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervention Services Plan or CCS. What this plan is, is essentially trying to root out the causes of disproportionate referral to special education services for African American students. Uh, and so while not considered to be part of the resolution, it's related work and will be coming to the board in only, I think on December 9th, actually. Um, and then as well as Dr. Reinhardt mentioned, we'd love to come back in a future board meeting and spend some more time. In a discussion about a proposal for BUSD equity measures, which was one element of the resolution. So we hope that this update was helpful and we welcome questions.
Um, I see Ty Alper, you have a question?
Well, really, I just had a comment and I wanted to thank Dr. Stevens and all the. Members of your staff that spoke tonight and presented on it and it's really. Inspiring and exciting and, and. And, and I've seen, you know, I've seen the board and other boards and other bodies pass resolutions in the past that. That in this, and Director Sine, I mentioned this with the, with the transgender policy where you. The board passes something and, and everybody feels really good about it, but, but then there's no implementation and. And I think what, what you've demonstrated is that when the board directs staff to do something that, that you'll do it. And that I think. It makes our sort of pronouncement so much more meaningful because they actually translate into real outcomes for kids and. And I just really appreciate that. And it means that when we do that and when we pass resolutions. We have to know what it, what a, what we're, what we're asking of staff that. You know, that have limited capacity. And I think there's, there's no better. There's nothing better for our staff to be, to be spending their, their precious time on than, than the subject of this resolution. So. I'm really proud of it and, and appreciate all that work. And it is, and it is a lot of work and it's really important. And, and again, really inspiring. So thank you. And thank you to Director Brown for. Initiating the resolution in the first place and crafting it and spearheading it. It's really, it was an achievement for us to pass it, but, but the real achievement will be in seeing it carried out. And this is a really exciting first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Alper. Director Lava Cutler?
So I want to thank everybody who's been involved in, in from Director Brown bringing this to the board. To, to the staff and the superintendent who are really putting some. Some action into, to the, the beautiful words on the resolution that's in it, moving it forward. I just wanted to add in terms of an equity measure that it's also. The hiring of our teachers of color, our Black teachers and where we stand with that. That's very critical. And I also want to congratulate our district because, you know, Julie, Julie and I have been involved with the 2020 vision from way back when. And really seeing how it's, it's involving the 2020 vision to not just be part of our LCAP. A mandate from the state, but actually something that we want to live and breathe by. Um, and that we want to embrace from the onset of when we hire and when we onboard our staff. So I, you know, I congratulate the district. It really is a movement towards, and it's taking us a long time, but you know, it, it, it takes a whole village of people to make things work. It doesn't happen just because of one person. So I want to thank everyone for this.
Thank you, Director Lava Cutler. I'm going to call on Director Ombra.
Uh, thank you. And thank you to Superintendent Stevens and all of those who presented this evening. It did my heart a lot of joy to see this. Agendizing to know that the work, just like Director Alper said, the work is actually being done. I do have some questions. So here we go. Get ready. Um. So I was really happy to hear about. The abolitionist teacher training that happened at the beginning of the year. I would have liked to see, however. With staff onboarding, so either new staff or returning staff, I would have liked to see us use that opportunity to really focus on. The implicit biases that we have within the district and I, and I heard from you, Dr. Stevens, that. It, it, that it's, it's forthcoming, that's coming soon. But I, I would have liked to see us start the year off a little bit stronger with those trainings. So I want to ask why that's. Why, why we didn't start the year off stronger with that. And then my second question. Is in regards to addressing the gaps that we have in math, right? So I was also so grateful to see the liter, the. Literacy Action Plan. But I want to know what the actual plan is around math for our students, just because in, in our resolution, it kind of encompasses the whole academic. The whole academic. Experience of our children. So I was happy to see that the literacy action plan is there. But what about our math action plan? Are we supporting our students in math? What do those gaps look like? How are we going to address those gaps? Um. Third question is around Longfellow, right? So in our Black Lives Matter Resolution, there's a specific. Therefore, be it further resolved, a portion about Longfellow. And I didn't hear that mentioned, but maybe I just missed it. During the presentation, but I didn't hear that mentioned. And I have more questions, but I'm gonna let the rest of my colleagues ask their questions after me. Oh, but let me just ask this last really, really important question. Who is housing all of this information, right? So we know that. We had a whole bunch of hands in the pot to be able to present today, which was really great and fabulous because it means that our work is being spread up. Amongst a whole lot of people, which means that it's, it's, we're doing what we're supposed to do, but who is the person, the one person that's responsible for all of this work? So that's, that was four. Let me know if you need, need to repeat any of them.
Brent?
Um, I'm, I'm going to, I'll try to work my way through this. Yeah, there, there are a number of aspects of the resolution that we wish frankly we've been able to do better than we could have. Especially over the summer, summer leading into the fall. Really, it was all hands on deck to prepare for distance. Um, I don't intend to use that as an excuse, but we had to really remake Ed Services, remake our entire summer professional development. To rewrite curriculum plan for the use of all these new technologies and then 100% of our training days. Were to prepare our educators to use these new platforms to be ready for distance learning. Um, I think it was a credit to the team that they were able to retool relatively quickly. After the start of the year to begin to introduce things like Patina Love's book. But that's really what took place over the summer in terms of both our induction program for new teachers and then the way we used our summer professional development. We were in an emergency and so we, we sort of had to take care of that. Um, in terms of math, this I think is another one of those temporary casualties of COVID. You know, we were working on a math task force. That had its last meeting exactly in February. Um, and then as it was sort of rounding the corner into March, schools were closed and so many things had to go to the backseat. Um, I would love to return to that work. I don't actually see that the staff has the capacity to manage that work. And prepare for school reopening. I'm afraid that one's probably going to sit on the back burner for a little while. But we are excited about the literacy action plan, both introducing it to the community next month and then rolling it out over the course of the spring and the summer. In terms of Longfellow, what we can plan to do the next time we present is a more detailed sort of in, in investigation of what's going on over at Longfellow. You know that there was a fairly significant transition in leadership at Longfellow. Principal Paco Furlan is there now, hasn't yet had the opportunity to even introduce himself in person. To his staff and yet has been getting to know that community and is beginning to lead really important equity conversations. With the report that the district commissioned in his hand as he sort of thinks about the issues that the community identified that they would like to work on together. So we'll definitely bring that back. And in terms of sort of who's got this in their hands. Right now, it's a shared effort. I can't say that we're sort of organized so that a single project manager is taking care of this resolution. You can hear that there's sort of joint ownership across a lot of the administrators in, in the district. And we've been using cabinet level time or sometimes what we call extended cabinet. To try and circle people around the resolution and sort of rally people to the various action items. But I think that it's sort of a step we could take moving forward to sort of better identify the owner. Again, we've been so hamstrung. By, by, by the efforts to reopen schools that it's just been difficult, more difficult than we could have anticipated to keep other work going.
If, if I, I, I recognize that. And if I could just say this. Superintendent, Superintendent Stevens, that's kind of why, why we need this, right? Because with distance learning. And with all of the learning lies or the anticipated learning loss that could happen, that's why we, we need this right now, right? And we can't really afford to. For lack of a better term, put things on the back burner. So for some of those things that have been. Put on the back burner Superintendent Stevens, I would like to push you to kind of. Maybe create a timeline associated with things like a math action plan or. Things like whoever, if we're using the, the MOCA framework for whoever, whoever's going to be the owner, whoever's going to be the person responsible for this work.
I'm going to put myself in here because what I want to say is kind of piggybacks on that a little bit and. I totally understand Superintendent Stevens, why, like that there's just so much on your plates and. Distance learning and the coronavirus and the whole setting around it has really exacerbated the equity issues that we've seen. So I think that will be, what would be really interesting would be. So I think that will be, what would be really interesting would be to actually use this as an opportunity to kind of delve deeper because it's so much more needed now. I mean, it's always needed, but it's just, I mean, the, the current situation is just illustrated how, you know, just like this, this shift has just exacerbated so incredibly the inequities. And, um, I think that I totally understand you're being overworked, but I also would urge you to, not overworked, you didn't say that, but like that you've been focusing a lot on opening. But I would say that it would be really, um, it would be very positive for us to like focus a little bit of even the reopening energies on this equity issue because it's such an important. I mean, it's just so critical right now. And I also, I mean, that being said, I also like really wanted to say that, you know, it's very exciting and I'm inspired to hear all that you've done and that so many people are committed to this. I know that there've been people committed in the district to this for a long time. And it seems like these are good steps that are taken in response to this resolution. And I will be here, but I know my board, I know the other board members will hold the district accountable to continuing this work. So now I'm going to call on Student Director Miller. And then Julie.
Thank you. Yeah, um, I agree with Director Brown. I, I mean, kind of using what President Appel said, like, distance learning is one of the biggest threats to equity or online learning that we've seen in a long time. And I think anything we can like create right now to, um, minimize learning loss, including like these programs is essential and definitely should have a lens, special lens focus on it. I also want to say, um, or like what's going on so far. And I think any opportunity see to include, um, some of our black students from our high school or middle schools in these conversations at the district level would be incredible. And I think it would provide, um, a lot of valuable insight for what extra things we might need right now.
Great. Thank you very much, um, Director Miller. I want to now turn to Director Sinai.
You, um, I, um, I want to thank everybody for all of the work that's happening and Director Brown for keeping, you know, for initiating the, uh, resolution and, and keeping us, um, on track and the train going. Whatever the right analogy is pushing us forward. I'd like to also really thank Ms. Caligari for the, in the sessions with the principal leadership and the African American community. I've heard really good things about it and, um, you know, working together with the city on it. I think it's been great and I really want to appreciate your work on that. Um, I, similarly, in the sense of kind of the, 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 the world of COVID and how it's exposed the, the inequities and the institutional racism that we all know has been existing. Uh, but now it's like even more blatantly in front of our face is also a kind of piggybacking on, I think, Director Lava Cutler mentioned it, is the issues around the staff, representation and the development, not just of teachers of color, but we've also had a lot of conversations about the, the inequities that have kind of surfaced among the differences between our credentialed staff and our classified staff. Um, and wanting to see, um, Mr. Reinhardt, when we're looking at the data that we're collecting, that we're also looking at some of our, um, our staff data around our hiring, our retention. Um, and also looking at, um, whether or not we have thought about or can think about, you know, developing any kind of affinity groups among our staff of color. I know we have our Teachers of Color Network that's through BFT. But to actually address some of the discussions and dialogue among our African American staff and having a safe space where they can raise the issues that they've been grappling with for, you know, long before COVID, but again, may be accentuated with COVID. I didn't see that anywhere. Um, and I, I know for all the reasons you've already mentioned, we haven't grappled with everything in the resolution, but I do think a key component of it was around some staff, the staff related issue. So thank you again.
You know, I can jump in.
Any comments?
We had not mentioned it in the sort of overview of the resolution. You know, we have now for, um, two years and now in our third year have been partnered with, um, with the Principal's Leadership Institute at UC Berkeley to do, um, what's called the Leaders of Color Network. Um, this is a grant that we've been writing annually to the Chancellor of UC to support leaders of color, including principal central office leaders to come together with facilitation by, um, by PLI staff, including Rebecca Chung, um, to reflect on the experience of leaders of color here, uh, both as they lead their school communities and interact in, in our Berkeley Central Office environment. Um, and both to name the issues that impact leaders of color, but also then, um, the PLI program produces a report for us each year, which surfaces some of the key themes coming from this network of leaders. Um, so we do have work like that, including the Teachers of Color Network, um, and I think it can be expanded.
All right, so, um, Director Lava Cutler, did you have more comments? Your hand, your hand is, oh, you took your hand out. Um, Director Brown?
Yes, I do. Um, I wanted to ask, and this, this next question is going to be an audacious question. So, um, I apologize if I'm ruffling any feathers, um, because I know this is Ms. Caligari. I know this is going to be a hard question, knowing that you don't have a, a, a full staff of folks. But is, I wanted to know, is OFI working, um, with our staffers, our staff, uh, reporting to OFI? Or how, how is OFI working with, um, our staff to ensure that, um, that equity moment or the equity block that we have in our schedule is used to, uh, call parents if. Excuse me? Okay, um, call parents if our, our, our students are not, um, in school, if they are chronically absent. Um, is that the work of OFI or how, how does that work, um, Ms.?
So our staff is working in collaboration with the schools. It's not their role to really, um, accountability, really it's not their role. However, they play a great role, uh, in, uh, the cost meetings and with connecting with teachers and staff. And the teachers, the teachers and staff on a regular basis, uh, consistent basis will contact our staff if they are, for example, unable to reach families or concerned about, you know, any issues that, that come about, uh, from their interactions with, um, with, uh, with, with families. Uh, that, you know, they find that there are additional needs, uh, that exist that we may want to reach out to support the families. So there is definitely a back and forth interaction. Um, we don't have staff, like you said, at, at all the school sites, so we're not able to do, do it at every site. Um, I have, uh, reached out and been in communication with the middle schools where we do not have, um, staff. And the leaders and counselors from those schools are reaching out to me with needs and support. And I've done as much electronically as I can so that the schools have access to the resources like funds that we are providing, um, to our families that are a result of the Burke Public Schools Fund, uh, fundraising. Um, I'd just like to add also, we just received, um, thirty fifty dollar gift cards for, uh, each school, uh, this week, that my staff is giving out to, uh, families. So that has to be in collaborations with the, collaboration with the school. And I've collaborated with those schools that do not have OFI staff. So, so we do our best and it's, 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 it's rough in this environment. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I just wanted, I wanted to, to know because I know, you know, what your staff looks like and I could only imagine how, um, what do they call it? How much of a hairy audacious goal that is to, to ensure that, that that takes place.
It's a heavy lift and I can, can I just give them a, a shout out? They've been doing a, an amazing job with, uh, making contact with, I mean, hundreds of, of parents repeatedly to make sure that they have the resources that they need. So shout out to the OPT.
And is there data associated with this? With this effort?
Um, everything that we're doing, I have, I have done forms and collected, you know, data on, you know, how many and how much is giving out into whom. So I do have a lot of, of, of data to go along with the work that we're doing now, yeah.
Thanks. And my final question, Tom, um, in your presentation, uh, you said, under chronic absenteeism, you said something about, um, analyzing home addresses. What was meant by that?
Yeah, I think that's just, you know, preliminary proposal to, to look at some of the various causes of why students aren't attending classes. I think, um, in a quick glance at some historic data in the district, students, uh, that were in socioeconomically disadvantaged situations who were asked to travel very far seemed to have, um, uh, different, uh, reduced attendance. And I think it's worth a, a closer inspection to see what exactly the trend is more recently. And, um, if that's a thing that we could consider as an effect, but I, I wouldn't make any conclusions right now.
Okay. I would, I was just wondering, especially in thinking about us being in distance learning, how that would inform any of the information that we were looking for in regards to kind of got absenteeism? Um, but thanks for clearing that up.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes.
You know, I, and I don't remember what it stands for, the ACI, the ASI, the, in terms of, um, I, I think using that in terms of, um, what is it? Using that to filter out the students who are the greatest needs, um, in our district. You know, students who are low incomes, students who, you know, have special ed, students who have, have Ds and Fs. It's really looking at those students in, in terms of the problems that are involved with transportation. I don't know how it connects to this as much, but I think it's more around, um, and Mr. Reinhardt probably being new to the district, hasn't seen that, that, that scale that's used to identify students who have greater needs.
All right, are there any other comments or questions on this very informative item? All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so we're going to move on to.
My colleagues right now, um, they're, they're up late. So thank you very much, everybody for joining us and we'll let you all go.
Bye, thank you. Before we go to the opens, the second, um, open testimony, open session testimony, I want to make sure everybody draw everyone's attention to the, um, draft school year calendar for twenty one, twenty two, because it's in the materials. And now I have, I have two people who want to speak in, uh, who've waited patiently for the second opportunity for public testament, up three people. And so, um, we're going to let you speak for, um, for two minutes. I'm going to start with Lindsay Nofelt.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'd like to echo Director Brown's, Student Director Miller and President Appel's disappointment about putting equity issues like math achievement on the back burner. I remain concerned about how the pandemic has overtaken all discussion about how to improve education in our district. I too would like our schools to open, however, distance learning has opened windows into how education has not been working well for a long time. And if you're interested, The Atlantic has a really good article about this. Administrators and BUSD staff need to commit to working on more than one thing at a time, issues that go beyond school reopening and social emotional needs. I appreciate all the hard work teachers have been doing, but would like BUSD leadership to make headway on simplifying priorities for teachers, training teachers on scientific strategies, meeting obligations to provide a free, appropriate, a public education, and making sure that we take this strange and difficult time as an opportunity to make systemic changes that are so desperately needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I'm going to call in Sherry Washburn and then we'll end, we'll end up with Martine de Lutos Flores.
Hi. So thank you for appointing me to the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. Uh, it's an honor to serve my community in meeting the needs of students with disabilities in our SALPA. I want to address something Director Sinai said this evening and also didn't say during her comments. She spoke about how the improvement of distance learning programs has essentially made social emotional issues the most challenging aspect of remaining in a distance learning model. And while it is true that distance learning has greatly improved since the spring, suggesting that social emotional issues are the greatest challenge of our students, that our students are facing, erases the experience of students with disabilities in our district. We have students with complex needs in the district who continue to struggle to access their education three months into the school year. I'm disappointed and concerned that neither Director Sinai nor any of the other directors mentioned students with disabilities this evening. I've been in special education for twenty plus years, so I understand how challenging this issue is. And while I don't know what the solutions are for each individual student, I do know that not talking about the needs of students with disabilities guarantees that they will continue to face barriers to their education. I truly applaud the USD for the focus on equity that was evidenced tonight by the discussion around, uh, gender identity and race. But students with disabilities must be included in any conversation we have about equity. I'm really looking forward to working with the board on amplifying the issues of students with disabilities in our district and across the SALPA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I'm going to call on Martine de Mucha Flores. Senor? Wait, wait, we're having a hard time hearing you. Try again.
How about now?
That's good.
All right. But it's not just, um, I appreciate all your work. You know, I come to speak on my own experience that I don't think it's safe to open the schools, right? Um, and I think your commitment to following the science, following the research, following those indicators are important. I speak to Rasa in my community who are afraid to come back to schools. I speak to black students in our community and their families and they're afraid to come back to schools because of the fear of the contraction and they see the evidence and the rate of deaths that's disproportionately represented in much black and brown people. So I applaud you all for staying, uh, committed to that. Some things, the reflections about what I've heard today is that, um, you know, as a, as a father to a daughter who finds LGBTQ issues really important to her, um, she really felt like it was really important to reconsider how we understand bathrooms, right? Um, often we point, we pick bathrooms that are in some secluded place or have to be unlocked, which then make them visible to others, in which they, we are trying to honor their own personal identities. Something that we can consider about that and how we talk about that. You know, the, when we talk about the Black Lives Matter week of celebration, I think it's really also important to also talk about that, you know, the structural issues, is structural issues of white supremacy and, and institutional racism have also painted targets on our backs, right? And those things have to be talked about to contextualize the way people see themselves and feel in the community. The other part that I think was really important to bring up today as well is that, um, research is key to how we see some of the equity issues. And I know our BRA department, um, continues to be understaffed and that needs to be an issue that's brought up and highlighted because that is the only way we're going to continue to draw on some of these equity issues. And the other thing I'd just like to suggest that maybe that the equity, the way that we come in equity advancing district is include an equity indicator as part of the way that we think about opening, um, given the pandemic. Because if we just open to open, then we'll never get there in terms of the equity issues. Thank you for the little sign and y'all have a good night.
Thank you very much. Um, now we're going to go to extended board member and superintendent comments. Does anyone else want to make an extended comment? I will just say that I am really, I'm, I'm actually very proud and, um, enriched that this was my final meeting because we talked about so many important issues that I care deeply about and I, I'm, and I feel totally, I totally trust those of you who remain and are new board members that you'll continue to push forward with this good work.
Thank you, President Appel.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President.
Thank you, President. Good meeting.
We'll see you.
Good meeting, everyone.
See you. Bye.
See you. Bye-bye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.